Okay, it's now four Monday morning, July 22nd, 2019. I call the Potter County Commissioners Court to order. We do not have an approval today. Couldn't find one. I guess we're all on vacation or whatever, but the sheriff is going to pay for us today. So don't be staying for that. And may I say?
Lord God, we just come to you and want to give you thanks and praise for everything that you've provided for us. We enjoyed the cool weather today and just be with everybody that does work outside as they continue their work. Lord, we just actually to be with our commissioners today as we go through this process of ministry support and also budget. It's a trying time for everybody and we're just actually to be with everybody and just still peace and patience upon everybody here today. We'll just give you all the thanks and glory for everything about the force again and just all these things that pray in your name.
We're pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the great level of righteousness, one nation under God, one God, one principle, with liberty, justice, and law. Honor Texas flag, pledge allegiance to being Texas, one state under God, one and one principle.
Thank you, Sheriff. First thing on the agenda this morning is approval of amendments from July 8th, 2019, my county court. We're moving on that, so approve number two budget amendments to consider an act upon the approval of the first one, 2019, of just one during this session.
Is this for the election?
Yes.
Security devices?
For the what?
Security devices.
I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments as per the motion.
Thank you.
And second, favor it. One, two. Number three, the vouchers. Consider an act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county attorney's office from the year of July 3rd to July 17th, 2019. Check numbers 186593 through 186749, our transfers 1260 through 12649, amount of $2,779,447.84.
We will approve the six vouchers as stated by the county judge. We have one question.
Page. I'll send you your discussion.
Just curious, on page three, item 186616, the very bottom, mattress clear sealed seen, is that basically what I think it would be, just a repair of a mattress or is it a given, the number of mattresses?
The number of mattresses are in the...
I have a couple of questions as well, Judge. Page 25, carrying 186630 for the top city of Amarillo, 401,000. The interloble agreement, what agreement is that?
Thanks, I'm a person. The emergency management.
And then page six of 25, check number 186641, diversified waste management, 400 dumpster for hiding on this square. Are we being reimbursed by Center City for that? Can you add a question?
No, I offered that up and just so we can have a dumpster here instead of having Matt and Cory haul trash off there every day. So that's something that...
Like, we should share.
Yeah, I mean, I would think so, right? I mean, Center City is obviously a good partner and they do a great job on hand. You know, I just want to make sure, you know, they're aware of this expense. It's obvious it's part of their expense.
They do cover the portable restroom station.
I guess it's a combined patient, not only the Center City, but county as well, allowing them to use it as a project that showcase it.
Sure.
It was just, it's just easier to put the dumpster out there than that guy.
Oh, I agree. Yeah, I'm just talking about the trash bins.
Oh, I agree. I'm just talking about these trash bins.
It's 100, it's $100 for each Wednesday, so.
It just might be worth the discussion and my share. That's my question. My final question is page 15 of 25, 186741, BFIS of Texas, budget policy renewal, $9,000. What renewal is that?
This is the, I believe it's for our volunteers, is that correct?
BFIS is the supplemental accidental death of this member of our staff. We have one of our volunteers.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Judge. Therefore, the treasures report, to hear the monthly treasures report, quarterly investment report. Good morning.
Okay, first of all, I just want to explain to my investment committee, we were unable to have a meeting this last week because we really didn't reconcile and get everything done because we were doing April, May, and June together until about 4 o'clock Thursday evening. So that's why you'll see in the investment report, I don't have their signatures, but I have emailed them and asked that maybe closer next week and go over some things and make some changes. So, okay, this morning, I'm sorry, I'm giving you the totals for today. At A and B, we're earning 2.49%. We have $13,887,134.69 in Texas pool, we're earning 2.37% with $417,881.81. Texas pool fund is earning 2.48. We have $12,641,843.65 in Texas class, we're earning 2.39 with $6,879,448.84. This is just our general fund with a total of $33,826,308.99 as our cash balance. Okay, so then if you would go to your investment report. And like I mentioned, on page two, that's just my venture and I apologize if this was quite a feat to get everything reconciled and get everything picked up. And I really commend the workers for diligently and very hard to, it's like finding needles in my haystack sometimes, and she really did an amazing job. That's why they're earning that money venture. And then on page three, you'll see our each grade down at the bottom, and as you can tell, they've slowly declined. It's every day we're up a little, the next day we're down, and so currently we're pretty stable, but it's still kind of unpredictable. But it's not in a, you know, like a cautious kind of thing, it's just where we are right now in the market. Okay, on page six. For the comparison, it'll show that as of June 30th, we're at $36.36.9 in our general fund, and we had a new fund come in with Texas class district's core million, we got the 54 million for, from the CO, and so already we earn $286,335.41 in interest from that investment. Okay, the next page will just show you the graph of where it's kind of been up and down on our market, but the trend, we're moving back up and gradual, and so we're still steady and everything is, is still moving along. Okay, I think pretty much that brings you up to date. One of the things that the committee that we've talked about in the past is referring to one of our brokers in and want to visit with them, so we will be making some changes and trying to spread our money out as we can as well. So that's coming up.
I do have one question. On page three, the last line item 34, the Potter County Post Court, our line item when we posted the conference.
Yes.
Looks like 9,000 still in there. What is the plan to, what will happen to that balance? It's up to the board. I didn't know what was appropriate under that line item, right, to use that. So assuming it's a hope for another type of event, something along those lines. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I just have one question. I thought you said spring court. Thank you. Number five, no limits, no excuses to your presentation from Lee and Old Street. No limits, no excuses, program will take any next initiative. All right.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me. And thank you, Judge Tanner. She and I spoke last week, so she invited me here today to tell you about the program and so program of the Amarillo Area Foundation. And so to start telling you about that first, I want to tell you a story about... It's not working, is it? I want to tell you a story about my niece, Ashley. I'm not usually technologically challenged, but today I am. Ashley, this is a picture of Ashley with my three boys. She was a senior in high school. She was at the Holly Hop Ice Cream Shop where she worked part-time. During Ashley's senior year of high school, I asked her, where are you going to go to college? I'll let her find out where she's going to go, if she's got any scholarships. And she said she wasn't going to college. Now, Ashley was a perfect student. She made straight A's, she was involved in school, she held down a part-time job, she never got into trouble, so that's kind of a surprise. But she said that she couldn't go to college because her mom hadn't saved any money and besides, she didn't even know the first step to go, to get there. She'd never spoken to her high school counselor. So whether it's a lack of money, a lack of resources, or just a lack of support and encouragement, there are thousands of people in Potter County, and Ashley was not in Potter County at the time, but there are thousands of people here in Potter County who are choosing not to go to college even though they can succeed. So take a look at the statistics, and you guys probably know a lot of these, but 14.8% of Potter County residents over the age of 25 have a high school or a degree beyond high school, post-secondary education. However, in Texas, that number is 28.7, double what it is in Potter County. In the U.S. it's 30.9. So Potter County is really fallen behind when we talk about post-secondary education or any kind of thing after high school. And when you look at our poverty statistics, I know that you guys know that as well, 21.7% of Potter County residents are living in poverty. In Texas, that number is 14.7, and in the U.S. 12.3. Also in Potter County, I think it's interesting that 21% of the residents who are living in poverty are actually employed, so despite the fact that they are working, they're still living in poverty. Our young people, it is clear, need a little help. They need help from every corner of their lives. They need help from Potter County, from our leadership here, they need help from their faith leaders, they need help from their educators, they need help from their employers, and they need help from our basic need providers, our providing agencies.
Everybody needs a mentor or somebody, because if you don't, that's when you lost, like, don't even believe in yourself. You work in the day, you go to school at night, and you don't have your expectation but to try to allow somebody, and then they can't take you, or they can take you firstly, and then they get tired of it, that a cost relationship on that person, to just give up.
Having that education and knowledge about power development, about brain development, about appropriate activities to do, that really increases their skill level and ability to understand and do the best job that they can with children.
We have someone from the top down, you know, from the bottom up, you know, like everybody, you know, from executive to other directors, to teachers, and so we all just encourage each other.
They're not high school, I was always thinking, well, I know I'm just going to kind of wing it or do whatever. I've seen and heard a lot of stories about people that are going to college, and college is great, and I just think the experience and the education is awesome, but college isn't for everyone. I'm not sure college is for me.
This program gives them the opportunity to come into a world-class facility, through the world-class processes, and more importantly, make contacts with other employers and other disciplines and see what that looks like. What everybody tells you as you're growing up is if you don't go to college, you're not going to be successful. And hearing that, it scared me because I knew that college was expensive and I didn't know how I was going to be able to pay for it. But after seeing all the people I worked with and just getting this experience, it's just amazing to see that, okay, you don't have to go to college, you get this four-year education to be successful in life, you can learn the trade, it's all been great things.
So these are all residents that I interviewed just a few months ago from right here in Amarillo, their true stories. And NLE is trying to re-embrace that need to progress, it takes a village. So my niece Ashley, she needed encouragement from just somebody, a mentor, somebody who could say, hey, it's okay, I can help you through this, even though I know it's intimidating and scary and you don't know what everything means, I can help you through this. Vada needed her educators and her employers to help her along and to encourage her, and Mark in the same way, he also had a family member in the home who worked for Bell, so he had encouragement from his family. But it's clear that not everybody in Potter County has that encouragement, they don't have a village around them. So in NLE is a collaborative effort to make sure that we can create that village around each and every resident that doesn't already have that support. And NLE started about in 2010 from a $1.4 million grant from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. So our mission is to use community collaboration to make sure that a quality credential is accessible to every single resident or to go a pathway to a quality credential. So when we talk about pathways, we're talking about any, any education pathway that will lead to a living wage job. So our pathways, we define as on-the-job training and apprenticeships. We have community college and trade programs, because often our trade programs are offered inside of our community colleges here in the Panhandle. And then we have, of course, university, and then we have military. That can't be a last option for everyone, because the military provides great training that offers a living wage, and whenever you get out of the military, there's always that civilian equivalent for whatever training you bought into the military. So that's how we define our pathways. And when I say quality credential, a lot of people are like, what does that mean? All it means is some kind of credential, whether it's a degree or a certificate or apprenticeships, some kind of training program, that will offer a living wage. We want people to be able to support themselves and to support themselves, families, we want them to have self-sufficiency. Back in 2010, NLE set a goal to influence 20,000 more quality credentials by the year 2025, and you can see, 10,000 more credentials, sorry, 10,000 more. And you can see, back in 2017, we started hitting our goal, and now we're going beyond that goal. We measured that by the number of quality credentials awarded by AC and WT, who would like to include more colleges across the Panhandle eventually, but that's where we started. And I believe, we believe, that we're going to hit that goal in 2025 because we're starting to gain momentum. And we have three ways that we are pushing our momentum forward. One is the growth of our partnership. We currently have 43 organizations. The sheriffs on this, thank you sheriffs on this, have signed up. They are now a partner. We've grown from about 20 organizations when I began this job in September to 43 right now, so we're really excited about that. Our end collaboration, we're trying to bring education and industry together, I'll talk more about that here in a second, and as well as a new mobile app that we are developing currently. So first, let me tell you about our partnership. Now it's advancing the driveway. So when you become a partner with NLE, first of all, let me say, especially because you are in the middle of budget, it doesn't cost a thing to become a partner, not one red cent, so just make sure you understand that. All it means is that your organization says, yes, we want to lead people to a quality credential, however we can do that within our organization, we're going to help you do that. We believe that everybody needs a quality education or should have access to a pathway to a quality credential, and that will boost our economy. So we will encourage, however we can, our customers, our clients, our employees, our students, whatever the case may be for our organization, we're going to try to encourage people not only to embark on that education journey, but going to nurture them and encourage them along the way as well. With our education industry collaboration, that is just what we're trying to bring throughout the Panhandle, our educators, both secondary and post-secondary, as well as all of our industry together, so that we can make sure that the programs that we have in our education systems are not limiting the needs of our industry, but they're highlighting those targeted occupations that we know are going to be in demand here in the Texas Panhandle. We don't need ski instructors here, but, so we're not going to try to promote those kinds of occupations. We want to promote those that are really going to expect to be in demand in the Texas Panhandle over the next decade. Our next collaboration conference, actually our first big conference, is happening on September 25th. We are concentrating on industries like healthcare, construction, and manufacturing. Those are the three industries, according to PRPC, that will generate the most new jobs in the Texas Panhandle that also provide a living wage. So we're starting with those industries, but we'll expand that in other industries along the way. Our mobile app called Go Plan 2.0 is set to launch this fall, and it will build individualized education plans for every single user, depending on their goal, depending on their pathway, and depending on what kind of basic needs they have. So for some of them, learning English might be their very first step of their education plan. And for each step of their plan, we provide all the necessary resources so that they can complete that step. We also connect them with mentors throughout the community or in their education systems. We connect them with basic needs whenever they have that requirement. We connect them with transportation. That's a really good one, because you know, so many of our residents don't have reliable transportation, and as you heard from the video with Vonda, it's really difficult to rely on family or friends for that piece. And our public transportation system closes down from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., so if you want to go to college at night and work during the day or by surprise, that's very difficult to do. And for many people without that support, it only takes one incident, one thing to happen. Somebody won't give them a ride, or they lost their job, or they don't have enough food on the table that night, and then they give up on their entire education. So they need that support from all around them. So if one way of support fails, then they have other support available. I know that we're running out of time, and I'm trying to do quickly.
Okay, we're 10 minutes. Yeah.
I already got 10?
No, you got one of the half minutes left.
I'm doing great then. So not all of our residents have that support that Mark found and that Vonda found and that my niece Ashley found. I was able to be that mentor for Ashley, and she found other support systems around her when she moved closer in, and she graduated, I was going to have to do that away, she graduated with her bachelor's from WT, and she's now being her master's at Texas Tech, starting with her career. So everybody needs a champion, everybody needs that support. Through the app, anytime someone registers for the app and they work for one of our partner organizations, somebody at that organization will get a notification saying, hey, you might want to encourage this person along the way. So there's a lot of different ways we can connect, and if you think about it, you can, you know, what if we had county judges promoting the app to individuals who maybe were going to be sentenced to time served, but they could say, you know, let's go out into the world, try this out and see if you can get the help you need to turn your life around? What if we had probation officers doing that? What if all the employees of Potter County who are not making a living wage currently could be encouraged to go and get an education so that they could earn a quality credential, and then they can support their families? Because the fact of the matter is, if we are targeting those individuals who are currently creating our high poverty rate, we're targeting those individuals, including them out of stock market, then we're going to immediately impact our poverty rate. Not only that, but if we can get those individuals to get an education, their children are going to be more likely to get an education. So I would like to encourage commissioners to consider joining the partnership. Again, it doesn't cost anything. I talked with Nancy, a little bit of Judge Tanner, about what that means. Any questions?
What does it mean?
Well, here's what you do. Whenever you join a partnership, your chief executive, so that would probably be Judge Tanner, would appoint a partner representative. The partner representative will come to our quarterly meetings and be involved as much as they can. Then also report back to Judge Tanner about what's coming and talk to other folks in Potter County to talk about what we're doing in our organization, getting the right people involved. She would appoint a liaison, that's the person that would get that notification from the app, whenever some point of your employees registers on the app and starts working on their education. The liaison also lets us know when you have internships or apprenticeship opportunities available. We're trying to create more of those opportunities from the Texas Panhandle. So then, when Potter County has shadowing opportunities or internship opportunities in whatever department, we can put that on our app, and you're promoting those opportunities to motivated individuals who want to turn their lives around, because they've downloaded the app, they're working on their education. We're hoping to create more opportunities for those individuals who are not currently in school, they've already given up on education, we're trying to draw them back in. We have several different ways, ideas of how women do that. So they appoint a liaison, they appoint a successor, that's the person that will take the partner representative's place. All those people get our newsletter every month, and we invite them to be as involved as they possibly can.
And you mentioned September 25th, where it's going to be held.
That is going to be, I am on a cloud, sorry, I cut that off because I was running out of time. It's going to be an all-day conference, and you can find more information at Go Plan About Life, and that's on the brochure that I gave you, which you forget. September 25th at Amarillo College, we'll have panel discussions for each of those industries, and we'll have two breakout sessions. One of the breakout sessions will be from the court educators, how to approach a company and ask them to create an internship for your student. To the other one, we're bringing in Kelly Johnson from the Department of Labor in Dallas, and she's going to talk about the benefits and challenges of creating accredited apprenticeships. We're also going to have Dr. Russell Lautercard there, and he's going to talk about the SWISS model of apprenticeships and how that's different, and how could we start working on that here in the Texas Panhandle and creating a different model that's skills-based rather than education-based, and also that brings in our local businesses to help with that education. So we kind of have this dream of creating locally recognized apprenticeship programs, industry-recognized apprenticeship programs, but, so maybe the classes are at Amarillo College, but most of the time those students are in different companies learning those skills that they need for that sort of thing.
And then I'm assuming part of your partnership initiatives, other municipalities, Randall County, City of Amarillo.
Yes, so the Randall County Sheriff's Office has already joined the partnership. I would love for the City of Amarillo to join, and City of Kansas. So we are now regional, it used to say, NLE used to have Amarillo under, but we joined with a group of workforce economic leaders in the area who are in charge of developing ways to implement the state's education plan, 60 by 30 Texas here in the Texas Panhandle. Most of those individuals are now on our workforce committee, and that workforce committee has become the 60 by 30 regional committee for here in the Texas Panhandle. So yes, we want every single organization in the whole Texas Panhandle to, companies, no matter how big or how small, because when we talk about bringing education and industry together, we want not just the Bell's and the Northwest and the BSAs and the PanTexas to have a say in what that looks like. We want the small companies to have a say in what that looks like as well.
I'm interested to know as you really kind of grow this and you have this collaborative partnership base, is part of your efforts at some point, at least on the visionary plan, is some legislative effort? Um, is part of your efforts at some point, at least on the visionary plan, is some legislative efforts to advocate for true living wages, right? So it's one thing to get the skills to get there, um, and that's what I would call the easy sell. Of course, any of us would want that to grow all of our community, but there's a lot of work on the policy side to really help get there. And it's a meet in the middle. A lot of times I think it becomes a party issue, but with the initiatives and to really move to the numbers, I mean, it just, my gut tells me some of that's really going to be needed.
Well, it's funny because I am, I've presented and I'm, I am, another way I'm trying to grow the collaboration is to bring on our local politicians, our regional politicians. Um, I'd like them to be partners, not in so much that they can do a whole lot for their employees or whatever, but just to say that, yes, they support this effort. So yes, but when you also have a five oh one C three, you kind of have to be careful about the, you know, lobbying and that kind of thing. So I think there's a fine line and, and to be quite honest, I don't know where that line is, so I'm going to be real careful here. But, um, yes, I would love, I mean, what if in ten years, our poverty rate is the best in Texas, right? The lowest in Texas? What if we had, have really been able to impact it through this community collaboration? And then people start noticing, um, we would love, after we expand this to the whole Texas Panhandle limit and we have our app in every single community and we're using that community's resources and that community's volunteer mentors and that community's volunteer drivers. What if, um, we can start selling licenses to our app? Um, and, and maybe even training them on how to build the foundation that makes the app happen to other communities outside the Texas Panhandle? But then we're starting to grow it and, and that would just help with our sustainability. We're not trying to make money, of course, but, but if we could do that and people start noticing, it will affect change. If it works, it's going to affect change. Um, back in April, um, I found this contest online and it was through the Women in Education Foundation. And they're a national provider of resources, of funding for, um, programs like this. And they were looking for programs that would lead adults back into post-secondary education. I, it took a while, I applied, it's time on the back burner. I ended up, NLLA ended up being one of three finalists across the nation. And they brought us down to San Francisco, the three finalists, to present our programs to, um, two-hundred-and-fifty stakeholders and funders of post-secondary education programs. And we did not win one at the price of twenty-five thousand dollar prices, there were two of those available, but we won the five thousand dollar runner-up prize. So they saw that value in the village as well. And, and these are people who are looking every day for these types of programs. I couldn't believe that we made it down there, um, as a finalist, but they see the value. We didn't have the data behind our app yet and I believe if we would have had that data to show how it's helping, how many people are we bringing in in front of, who had already given up on education, I believe we would have had a better chance.
Interesting.
I should give it up much, now it's a sergeant.
Okay, you only six minutes somewhere. Does anybody else have any, um, questions or any comments?
Who did you have in mind to appoint?
I have no idea. I just think they need to adopt the program at the end and they will.
And we'll, we can break it down by appointment or however we want to do that to get a little more meaningful for whoever. We can have a liaison or a leadership or a house governor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm going to go on to, you did the, that was that. You heard, okay. The motion that, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve participation in no limits, no excuses.
Second.
Second. I'm going to ask another question. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. We're hoping for a chance. Uh, we'll be, so at the August twenty-eighth quarterly meeting, we'll be in the role as members. Um, we'll be, we'll be there.
Excellent, thank you so much. Okay, insurance report, recognize the insurance fund before, okay? I promise I'll get you out of here quickly, I have a couple minutes to go.
Um, there's something individual on the, okay.
Okay, number seven, uh, number six, no recognize, number seven, formal proposal, number one, one eight five, those one nine. Insurance stock loss and other employee insurance business, we're reporting insurance advisory committee.
Actually, I'll hop ahead to that and then we can address those pieces right now. If you go to page twenty-one. So what we were looking for, the medical plan design funding. So if you recall, when I first came on and spoke with you all, we were looking at a thirty-one point two percent increase. I believe, or not point two, over your current spend just because of the high dollar claims you had, the cost of services, things along those lines. So there is an increase that will still inherently be part of the funding. And that's just because, again, of the high dollar claims, your claims are your claims. So even with the arrangement, we're looking at an increase that would have to happen. But when we spoke with the committee, there is a much lesser impact to the county by having this arrangement with Northwest and Edna. And so really, we talked about doing a six point nine percent increase for the county and a six point nine percent increase for employees, with no plan design changes. I know last year, we had both. We had plan design changes and we had increases to employees. So to try and make it less impactful to members, we're looking at doing just the cost share amongst those. And if you go to page twenty-three, that will show you the increase per month for the individuals. And it's the second from the bottom line item that we're looking at. And so when we're looking at, these are employer or employee rates, the increase to employee rates. The second from the bottom, you'll see that for active employees, it's five dollars and thirty-nine cents a month increase. So it's not a per page, but that's per month. And the most would be that twenty-eight sixty-three per month for family. And then the tiers in between for employee plus spouse, employee plus child, employee plus one or more children, or two or more children. So it's minimally impactful from an employee side because we're not changing the plan designs. We're changing the network to keep the costs lower. And then a six point nine percent increase, which is pretty minimal monthly.
So let me ask another question, maybe a little bit under that layer. So if I carry, if I'm an employee, I carry just on myself, six dollars or five fifty, just to say for simplicity, per month, an increase. If I insure children, twenty-one, family, twenty-eight per month, that's the increase as well as the six point nine percent.
That is the six point.
That is the six point. Okay, okay, perfect. And then how does that translate to summary of benefits, right? So is my deductible the same? Is my co-pay the same?
Yeah, all those things are going to be the same. So we'll get the same deductibles, same co-pays, same co-insurance, same, you know, when you go to your doctor, it's going to be the same visit as the other that you had before. So we're trying to, when we're going through these numbers, figure out the least impactful piece. And so we know that we're going to have some network disruption for having that move over. But from an employee side, we didn't want to blow up your deductibles again. We didn't want to increase your co-pays. That's a little bit transactional, a little bit harder time of services to be able to pay for those. And so that's why we're looking at that six point nine of cost share between the county and employees.
And then if an employee wants to, like, is learning about this change alongside, and, you know, we've talked about network disruption quite a bit, kind of a big thing. So if they want to go see if their primary care that they've always gone to is in this new network.
If you go to the Edna website, yeah, there's a customer provider search and we have four county employees that they'll be able to go on. And we've got an edo case copy of that now, but we'll certainly get that information out. And then Holmes Murphy will be here for the last couple of weeks of August for open enrollment meetings. Come out to present to employees and give them the information on how to find the providers, how to get information of continuity of care. So let's say someone's in their third trimester of pregnancy, changing doctors is difficult because if their doctor is no longer networked, you know, that's a difficult transition. And so what there is is our continuity of care, that those individuals will be able to continue on with their current providers until after, you know, they've given birth. There's certain things that fall into those qualifications when you're in the middle of certain treatment paths.
Okay, and so to that point, what about employees that are in long-term transitions of care, right? So I think about some harder diagnosis, cancer, a long-term illness, what does that look like?
It depends on the type of illness that they have. It's about the individual case that makes this.
Okay.
Usually things, so chronic conditions, so usually diabetes and heart, heart conditions, things like that. And normally, that's not necessarily a transitional care. Cancers could be depending on where they're at in stage and things along those lines. So we would need to individually speak to people and they would go through Edna to get approvals to help that continuity of care.
But it's an option for them.
It could be an option, depending on diagnosis. Thank you. I'll talk to Stoploss, or anything as well. We received responses from three vendors from Stoploss, but all of them provide Stoplosses possibly carved out because our current, and then we have another Stoploss center. And so we had Edna, HM, and then Gany and Michael respond up to our Stoploss pieces. And you'll notice that Edna has their revised quote, we actually, they came in with an initiative, thirty-five percent increase over current. So that was obviously not palatable and made, actually, really good partners and brought that down to nineteen point eight percent. And when we look at the renewal, again, the renewal is not something we can take just because if we're looking at the partnership between Edna and Northwest, we would have to carve out that stop loss. And really, what we're looking to do is partner, the recommendation for our Stoploss is to partner with Edna. And part of that is ease of administration of Stoploss reimbursement. So when you use a third-party Stoploss organization, what ends up happening is you have claims that reach over a certain threshold. Your reimbursements, you need to submit claims to the Stoploss company. And then it takes time for them to reimburse you back the monies that you already spent out of your accounts. When you partner with Edna, the money is automatically reimbursed back and actually stopped with those high dollar claims. So to give an example, you have a premature child that is in the NICU and their claims are seven hundred thousand dollars. If you have a third party, you pay that seven hundred thousand dollars to start with as a county. And then you have to wait for the reimbursements back on that. If you partner with Edna as the Stoploss partner, then the second that child reaches over the threshold of, I believe, a hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I'm thinking, over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the rest of that is on Edna and you don't have to worry about that being continued to be given out of your account. So from an administrative piece, it's similar from a claim side, but also from a reimbursement side, you don't have to worry about trying to fill that gap between when that claim hits and when the reimbursements get paid back.
Okay, so because of your current agreement with medical, all of these other medical companies go over one of the bundle of the bids. So we had marketed these separate benefits. So I'm going to start with medical on slide seven. We received eight bids from different carriers. We wanted to mirror, you have a very rich, actually, medical plan. So we wanted to mirror that as closely as possible. So if you look on, actually, pages eight and nine, you see the various bids that we received from the eight vendors that were quoted. On slide ten, we have the dental recommendation from the insurance advisory committee. We got a bid from United Concordia that actually has a three-year rate guarantee, which is sort of rare to get from a dental provider. A lot of our dental vendors usually want to do one year, sometimes two years, and United Concordia was actually able to do three years. So this is what we at the committee are recommending, the eight point eight percent increase to the current plan.
So United Concordia is the actual plan, that is the name?
That's the name of the vendor.
That's the name of the vendor. And do they operate, like, that's not insurance that would ring a bell to be a dental insurance?
Yeah.
Where, you know, an Edna plan or MetLife, or, you know, there's others that would ring a bell to we? I mean, my only perspective is there's confidence that they have providers in this area, they reimburse appropriately, all those things.
Yes, they, it's actually, they're actually a very large dental carrier. Dental is, I believe, the only benefit they do. And there are other carriers out there that actually utilize United Concordia's network. So they're a very strong network. I think we looked up and saw in a ten-mile radius of downtown, there's a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-six in network providers. So a very large network available over here.
And keeping the richness of the plan intact?
Same exact plan.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, on page eleven, we'll talk about the life, just as a group life, and accidental death. We received twelve responses, there are twelve quotes for this benefit. And again, we wanted to match your current, the current plan design for your employer paid coverage, as well as the voluntary supplemental life that you have right now. On page twelve, you see where everyone came in. This is just the employer paid part. Quite a range of quotes that we received. You'll see at the top, just under your current, Symetra came in with, by far, the lowest, actually, less than half of the annual cost of your current plan. Your rate guarantees. So on page thirteen, you see the insurance committee, insurance advisory committee recommendations to move to Symetra. They will match your current employer paid plan. And their voluntary life rates will match your current plan as well. And if there's anyone, this is employee or spouse, who's currently over the guaranteed issue amount on the voluntary life, they will grandfather those amounts over, so they don't have to have that many questions.
So this is interesting, right, that your report back is longer terms, same richness of plan, I know across the board, but how did you guys accomplish that?
Well, life and disability are very commodity-type products. So it just depends on how, and there's so many carriers. And it depends on how each carrier is running with a certain type of industry. And so you can have those big swings in rates based on how they're performing with their claims. So yeah, if you look at that previous page, page twelve, you know, from minus a hundred and twenty-four percent to a thirteen percent increase, it's just, that's not uncommon for a life or a disability.
Competition is good.
Exactly, yes. Yep, and that Symetra plan also has a three-year rate guarantee, just like the United Concordia. On page fourteen, we also have to market the ACA reporting. We received four different vendors, I think you're going to see quite a range of quotes on this too. ACA reporting is what keeps you in compliance with all the guidelines due to healthcare reform. And there are quite a few that, quite a few requirements. On page fifteen, you'll see the four quotes that we received. Some of these, for example, BenefitScape, which has the lowest bid, the ACA reporting is all that that company does. Some of these others have multiple things, like they'll have Cobra or other types of reporting that causes their, their client base to be a little different, and then some of their costs are higher too. So BenefitScape, they have a, they have their own software that they use. And again, the only thing that that company does is ACA reporting. So they're able to really give us a little bit, so that they are the lowest one. So if you see on page sixteen, that's who the advisory committee recommends. You see the cost, annual cost there.
And Kay, this was part of the partnership with TAC. We used to not pay for this, this new line item.
This is true.
Okay. How is that reflected in the budget? Is it just rolled into the same insurance amount or is this a separate item?
All of it.
All of it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? On slide seventeen, we also had to market the Cobra administration. We got five different quotes. Again, this is, this is a, keeps you in compliance with all the Cobra regulations. On page eighteen, you see the five different quotes that we received. All of these have three-year rate guarantees. The only sort of thing that separates some of these is that you see those first two, Discovery and Payflex, they can actually quote based on per event. And that's just per qualifying event. That's someone leaving the employment with the county, triggers a qualifying event, so they're offered Cobra. So they can quote it per event, or they can just do a standard per employee, per month rate, which all of the, all of the carriers were able to do the PEPM. Only Discovery and Payflex can do the per event. So if you look at this, we received, the lowest bid that we received was the PEPM rate form from Navia. And that's who the insurance advisory committee recommends. Again, this is another three-year rate guarantee for this service.
Is this the new budget line that, okay, or we've always been through that?
We've been paying for Cobra coverage through the insurance already.
Any questions? Okay. Last of all, as a vision, we did not market this, this wasn't part of the bundled benefits that you have right now. We did get a five percent renewal increase, so we are also looking for approval for that as well. Any questions on the vision? Okay, and that would just be the same plan you have now, same carrier, no life. I'll hand it back over to Julie, a little bit more about the plan.
So again, just right back over to the medical plan design funding. Just last day, we were looking to not increase the co-pays deductibles out of public expenses to employees. It's a six point nine percent cost share increase that we can, between the county and employees, to share that cost. That funding increase to the county will be four hundred and six thousand dollars for employees. Again, it was those members that were looking at that on page twenty-three, about between five dollars and thirty-nine cents, but twenty-eight sixty-three depending on what tier of the management is on.
Well, a question to that. So a year from now, right? Like, I recognize we're in the transition year, so the savings we hope to get, you don't always get right out of the transition year. Six point nine percent growth, we're trying to pull away from this ten percent, or every year not sustainable model. What do you envision year two, based on the agreement and fee schedule? So is it a two-year increase, or two percent increase, or net neutral?
I don't think we can get net neutral, honestly. It's going to depend on a couple of factors. So it's really going to depend on your large plans. And we've had a few rough years when it comes to our claim dollars, and that's just the nature of the business. If we have a better year when it comes to large plans, we may be able to be net neutral. We placed this with the city, and then I actually have another city that was very similar type of program. Year one, it was a decrease in overall costs, and so we didn't have to do anything. And eventually, it'll start to level itself out again. But for both of the ones that we're talking about, had long term arrangements with these types of things, it's pretty net neutral across the board for several years. So really, what we're looking to do is say, when we're looking at our budget, what are our claims look like for this year and for next year? And so with our new arrangement with Northwest, is this going to make it so we don't have to increase the county? We don't have to increase employees? We don't have to change the plan designs? The answer to that is, I am cautiously optimistic that we can get there. It just really depends on our claims and what we get. So if we have, you know, a two million dollar claim hit us this next year, that's obviously going to affect us long-term. But if, as far as the costs, we have, if approved with the Northwest and Edna, plan designs, or not plan designs, but the arrangement with us, then we're likely to be a lot more level and stable for years.
So we can keep it flat in the budget as opposed to this ten percent, ten percent every year that is not sustainable. And then what it feels like to an employee is then your deductibles crank up to a two thousand dollar deductible, or you can't even afford to even go to the doctor, even if you have insurance.
Our other piece too is, you know, if you have a COLA increase to your employees, and then you end up having an increase to your premiums every year, plus your deductibles and co-insurance go up, then for most employees, it's not really an increase anymore. Sometimes we go backwards if they have, you know, a bad year for their own health. So, I mean, we're trying to, with this, to make it so that we don't have to do that. As you're saying, I'd love it if it was net neutral, I can't for the future. Sure, it comes to claims. But when we have these types of arrangements, we definitely see a lot more long-term success and not having those big fluctuations because it's tied to some to Medicare versus the standard costs that they have for services and hospital systems.
So in that same spirit, and maybe the answer is just to phase two, let us get through this. We've spent a lot of years talking about wellness initiatives and, you know, it's just like, it's the trending thing in the industry. But we have a fiscal kind of lens because we obviously can save money by making sure employees are healthy, as well as them having a better quality of life. So is this group, and again, it might be phase two, once this transition happens, that Western Top, six months ago or so, talking about the top three or top five diagnoses, the high claim diagnoses, and how to start really hitting it hard with the wellness and move that needle?
Yeah, so there's two pieces to that. I'll be meeting you now with the advisory, or the insurance advisory committee, and they're probably going to hit six. Do an over your wellness program. And it'll be a little bit different than what we had before because we have a different carrier, so in Edna versus a TAC. They have different programs in place that they can utilize. We have that wellness dollars too that we can put in. Some of the programs are free, included with the Edna program. There's two pieces to that. They have that program where they can really dive into knowing that I'm not taking my medications, or knowing that I've been, you know, diagnosed as iatic at some point and I'm not getting test strips, you know, those types of things. So we'll dive into that. Holmes Murphy actually has a data warehouse that we will receive reporting from Edna directly on a real-time basis that we can dive into your claim set and say, we see a prevalence of diabetes in your population. Let's go ahead and talk to the committee and see if we can put in a diabetes prevention or wellness program. So that's absolutely still in our forefront. It's not something that's on a back burner. It's get through this process and get this running. But also, we've already had discussions of coming back in and trying to move the needle when it comes to your employees' health.
Thank you.
We're going to talk about pharmacy.
Well, we need to vote on this. And I'm assuming, kind of quickly, I don't know, we need to vote on each one. I don't know, I can't just vote on the whole thing, it's for us.
Let's vote on each one.
And if you want me to address pharmacy, I can do that really quickly as well.
That would be.
Yeah, all right, so that's where I gotta vote for this call. All right, so for pharmacy, the program option can be through Edna, which is also CVS bought out at them. And so it'll be a program through them. There's significant savings with that program because of what your CVS is. We are not changing your network name in pharmacy at all, we're not eliminating any of the providers. There's always some changes to formulary when it comes to moving providers. But even when you say the same provider, there's always formulary changes. Someone might go up a tier or down a tier for their medications. But it's very similar formulary we had before, and the network will be the same broad network that you have right now.
That's what I wanted to know, I'd like so much. Okay, okay. Okay, so you want me to read this and we vote on each one?
I think we need to vote on each one. All right, A, consider an act upon a local agreement with City Mayroll, including all the insurance, and a motion.
Second.
The motion is second on A, raise your hand. Four to zero. B, award formal proposal number one-one-eight-five dash four to the medical insurance stop loss.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Four to zero. Number, letter C, award RFP for dental insurance.
Okay, this is so easy. Right.
Any questions to say all in favor, raise your hand. Four to zero. D, award RFP for basic life, dependent life, voluntary life, and A, B, and D. Move to three.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your hand. Four to zero. E, award RFP for ACA.
Second.
Have a motion is second, all in favor, raise your hand. F, award RFP for Cobra.
Move to approve.
Have a motion is second, all in favor, raise your hand. Four to zero. G, consider an act upon vision renewal. Move to three.
Second.
Have the motion as second. Consider, all in favor, raise your hand. Sorry, I was going to read the next one. Four to zero. H, consider an act upon medical plan design recommendations.
Move to approve.
Second. Have a motion is second, all in favor, raise your hand. Four to zero. And I've set medical plan funding levels for equal, one hundred and twenty.
Move to approve.
Have a motion is second, and second, all in favor, raise your hand.
There you go. All right, how about that?
All right, you're still up, right? Still up. Number eight, Human Resources Department, consider an act upon the purchase of a conference table and six chairs, total of two thousand six dollars and fifty cents for human resources, equipment, repair, replacement.
This was actually discussed last budget. I had it on my budget at Merit, there was a misunderstanding. And the court approved me to get the conference table. But there was a recommendation to get it out of the previous year's budget. I did not understand that during a later time. And so I didn't get it from the previous year's budget. I would like to go ahead and get it from repair and replacement, equipment repair and replacement, if possible. We use, will use the conference table for such things as unemployment meetings and hearings, entries, budget, committee meetings, those kinds of things. We did have the space for it and I would like to request that at this time.
How much do we have in that account, Karen?
I know that it has plenty, last time all it was about sixty, but I can't really put anything else.
Okay, okay. I make a motion that we approve the purchase of conference table and chairs to come from equipment repair and replace the county HR.
Have a motion is second, all in favor. Four to zero.
Thank you, Karen Martin, thank you.
Number nine, enter the enterprise fleet management to consider an act upon approving the pre-order of lease package duty to the sheriff's office by the county federal championship.
Clear.
I need to ask you, you know, if you want to, you'll allow us to go ahead and make our purchase of the vehicles now. They've been bought by two companies that have been done ordered in the now, like, in November, along with other counties who will not proceed with vehicles until twenty twenty-one. Apparently, there's redesigning of those things on, and so they have other parts to do somehow. If you don't get on the list, how, we have several vehicles already that have, either passed or over.
So Sheriff, this list is what you would be proposing in the new budget of October one, but you're seeing, based on vendor limitations, you're trying to get that ordered now? Okay.
Move to through the inquiry. At eight, four more, and then I'm going to move down to three, I really need to.
The referral request was for eight, but in the other discussions, it was six.
Six, six tober. Which two of those are bans that you're going to? So Judge, would it be appropriate to pass this until we get to budget this afternoon as we're talking to a company?
Yeah.
And then come back to you in six. Okay. Can we come back to you? Okay. And just so I'm clear, Sheriff, you're saying to use your, forfeit your account and pay it or until budget gets here? And then are we reimbursing, or what is that like, Karen?
This is actually a time for the fund.
Okay.
And I think definitely we need to have that, that we feel, if we're purchasing, we want to know we won't be paying for six bucks. And how it depends on.
Okay, okay, okay.
Is this something we can do now or throughout?
Well, I think there's a question about the number of meetings. It's really a budget item, but we're trying to get it now.
No, I didn't know you were asking for eight. You asked for twelve, I cut it in half.
And the deal is, is that we've got several. The other thing is too, we've got, the other, the other thing is too, is we're going to, while we're going to be pre-designed, we don't even know what we're going to get for next year. If we get them now, our equipment that we have now versus next year, if we go to a different design title, or if we have to go to Ford's, we're going to have to reinvest in all of this. Anyway, the vehicle that you have now, are there at least two of them that you can hold over? Oh, there are some that we're not keeping. And so what I'm asking is that we approve the six, don't worry about the other two. That's what I'm asking.
I thought we were, I thought we could get an eight.
I made my pitch, you stand up.
We can't rely on the vehicles, we've got these vehicles going to cars at high speeds, and it's, it's dangerous for officers to drive these vehicles rolling off of them. Place can break, things can happen. I thought we were at eight, but the sheriff agreed by the vans. And so we're back at eight vehicles, and then he's buying the vans out of the public.
We were at eight total.
I know, and then he's providing.
He's bought vans, but we have six.
She thought the vans were, well, I didn't understand that either then.
The thing is, we're not going to get those vehicles until a year from now.
I know.
So all the miles are going to be still adding up to the ones that we still have.
Yeah. And some of them will be up to two hundred, two hundred and twenty or more.
How much can they?
If we order them now, we won't be able to haul them in.
How much can they change a title?
They're gonna completely redesign it.
And how?
It's kinda like the same thing with the Ford's, we can have the ground big, so just quit making them, you know, kind of thing. And I've heard the word for three last several years that they're quitting the top.
I was gonna say.
I don't understand why, especially with you got all the paid blood from the agency dropping, you just go away with it. You did have the ground big, so.
No, no.
Alright, well, let's just come back to this, just come back to this.
Is that, yes, we'll come back, we'll come back in twenty minutes.
Alright, thank you. Number eight, policy amendment, consider an act upon proposed amendment to the vacation leave provisions of the county office policy procedure. This is something that I've been thinking about for over fifteen years, of what I became judge. I think that once a person is pretty sure they're gonna stay here for twenty years or so, they should be given a bit more vacation time. And to cap out it, and how many days, right now? Karen, is it twenty-five, you think? Twenty, twenty days. It should be more than that, I'm sorry, we shouldn't reward people for staying that long. And so I, I propose that we move that up for every additional year, if they're here after twenty years, give them an extra every day, an extra year, an extra day, sorry, extra day of vacation.
After twenty.
After twenty, after twenty years. I'm just saying, that's just my thought. I think it's incentive for people to stay. So y'all can do what you want.
So Judge, today, it caps out as at twenty days regardless of tenure, and that's per year? Twenty days vacation per year? Okay. So even after, so even if I'm here, one year, I have a one year anniversary, I get twenty days? That's what kind of, I don't have.
No, it starts right here, it starts right here. First through the fourth year, you get eighty hours.
Okay, this is current.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And then it goes up, it's really nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty, thirteen, fourteen. So after you get twenty, I'll just only add another little additional day.
Okay, so I'll only add thirty, uh, two hundred hours.
Thank you, you put in time to go out and find that rule sheet, huh?
So your addition, Judge, is the last two, the twenty-five, twenty-nine year and thirty year and over, and that's your re- recommendation?
Well, no, twenty years, through twenty-four, okay, then you get additional, okay?
How do we get additional?
One day per year of vacation.
How about for people that already have?
That's, that's, it starts, it starts in this budget year starts, I think, they've been here that long, they get, they get a certain amount of vacation.
Um, would I have any objection to that, anybody? It's got to happen, I don't think so. I don't think we're gonna be, yes, Judge.
Yes. The challenge of the, the history would be saying, there's a whole lot of history that you have, continuing to apply for these, or now, it changes every five years. So if twenty, you related for twenty days, but at twenty-five, you got twenty-three days, and then at thirty, you get twenty.
That's fine.
Twenty-five is all of the.
The same cap.
Yeah, if you wanna keep it the same, that's fine.
That would be so much.
So much easier.
That's fun too, that's fun, just so, just so they get some incentive to stay here that long. Sandra, hello, have you been here? How, how many years?
A long time. So, approaching forty.
So you have this, this change of vacation time and already built into the budget, Judge, like I'm assuming, what, does this hit the salary line item or how is this accommodating for our budget? Because we know the number of tenure of our employees, we know how many employees that will affect.
Really the only time that I believe it would impact, I don't know if offices like the sheriff's office who have to have more overtime to fill any people who are taking additional vacation days. Or when an employee terminates or retires and their vacation pay out.
Okay.
We'll just cross that bridge when we come to it, right? Okay, so y'all understand what I'm, what I'm talking about? Uh huh, yeah, I want that in the motion. I'll make a motion that we propose an amendment to the current vacation policy. I'll be out with the, with the timeline on that. Twenty-three, twenty-four years for additional three days.
Okay.
Twenty-five years through twenty-nine years additional three days, and then thirty years of over. Total of twenty-five, twenty-five days, okay, is that right? Okay.
Second.
That's your motion?
And the motion, yeah, and my second. All in favor, raise your hand. Or you will. Thank you. And then number nine, policy manual to consider an act upon proposed amendment to sick leave provisions of the county office procedure. Put that on there and Mr. Coffee and Tad are kinda believers on this. Ted's going back. I'll let you address this and then I'll see what you can do.
Thank you for putting this on the ledger, I appreciate you considering this. What this is, is a policy, um, change to discourage sick leave use and compensate employees, or well compensated employees for their retirement or termination. This is one use sick leave, the employees build up, and so I'm asking the court to agree to compensate employees and you have the policy in front of you, there's a, a ten year, um, policy, um, bonus and a twenty year, um, policy. Twenty year time limit, and a ten year.
So this will definitely affect the bottom line of the budget, so, um. So why don't you, why don't you go through just all of these and just explain to everybody?
You don't have to go along with it.
Um, yeah, I don't have the spreadsheet that you're talking about.
Why don't I have the spreadsheet, I have policy.
Uh, why do I have this? No, I'm not still?
Yeah, I have this.
Okay, what's your pen, no, no. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so.
That's not very, I'll make it. When I'm done, I'll sort it for you later.
And so if you go with the, the ten years, so employee has to be here ten years. And the employee would have, um, four hundred and eighty hours of sick, of cumulative sick leave. And then in termination, he would be, or she would be entitled to fifteen percent of whatever their cumulative sick leave is, times their salary not exceed thirty-five dollars an hour. So in essence, you're gonna, the employee is gonna get fifteen percent of whatever's in their sick leave, and, and compensation if they not exceed thirty-five dollars an hour.
What's the cap on that? So you mentioned four hundred and eighty?
You gotta have four hundred and eighty hours, it's, it's a twelve, it's twelve weeks.
Okay.
You're required to have twelve weeks for you to have.
Okay.
So you have, that's.
So the minimum is four eighty, what could the max ever be?
What would it just down to, again, is the, then how much, how much somebody would use their sick leave?
Right, but you could accrue, like, let's just say you've been here forty years, just to take a discussion, right? You could accrue and that could become a very big line item, should fifteen percent, so I don't, I'm trying to understand the range. Like, I understand the baseline to be eligible, ten years, four hundred and eighty hours. I think, just in terms of being very cautious, you need a line on the other end, a max, and no more than.
Why don't you see the examples, the early examples, I don't see, they're all, I took those. Okay. You do take? Okay, so. Seventy-two hours is a, a new sick leave at, at ten years. I'll tell you what, Tad would help with this together.
If you had forty years and never used a damn sick leave, you'd have ninety-six hours of sick leave per year, times forty years, times fifteen percent. Cap at thirty-five dollars an hour would be twenty thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
That's tough to manage during budget every year, because you're gonna have to manage that, like, that would be half, to, you know, to be really transparent, fast forward a year, let's say a year from now. We know the budget, we know the cap's coming, we would really have to look at our tenure of employees, if we have to be diligent about it. Look at the tenure, who might cash out, if you will, and make sure that's accounted for with the budget, because if that's one employee, what are we up to now, what's our count, six? Six hundred, and I would say we have a pretty good tenure in the county. Just, just something to think about, that's why I'm asking you to have a cap on the other end, just for, to understand.
I realize it can be expensive, but I don't, I don't think that, that there's not anybody that doesn't use sub-sick leave, so, so that example, that, that K is probably not a real example, although somebody could, obviously.
Sure.
It never could be you, but, um, at this point, I don't think, I don't think we're seeing that K, I don't think we're seeing that. There's always somebody using, they're comfortable with a sick leave, they can transfer, transfer someone into their IL, so they're using it there too, they're taking a sick leave with some of their sick leave. You transfer a page here if you don't use any sick leave.
And I always struggle, Judge, um, because I don't, I'm trying to articulate this, you know, county government is so different than a normal employer that, you know, there's good record keeping. We run into this as employees leave, and there's always a debate sometimes about just the vacation leave that's on the rolls and who, what's the spreadsheet? Every elected office, you know, obviously is under their own purview. And so I think, I mean, I hear this, I don't know if it's fair, but I hear it sometimes throughout the county, you know, there might be offices that just let people go home or if they're sick and don't even use their sick leave. So then I feel like we get a little bit into this territory of, well, that office never uses it and, and in my office, I make them use it because that's what we should be doing. I don't know if that's fair, but that's, I think, the color that I have going in.
Well, as an example of, from the city mind, they capped it off at seven hundred and fifty hours.
I, I, I obviously think that, that the, the department's, the department has already made in their employees who use a sick leave.
Oh, we know that's not happening.
Well, that may, that needs to be the policy. But I also think that you got employees, good employees, that can work every day and do what they're supposed to do, and then at the end of their, end of their springs, when they decide to retire or leave, they get absolutely nothing for their sick leave, they get nothing for their time, they, they've come and been here every day or whatever that time is, they, they dedicate their lives just counting and then not be able to get anything when they leave. Pretty sure, here's the, like you said, the, the city does offer a, um, you may don't explain it very well, but it's seven twenty, like I said, so it's ninety days at the salary the employees make. Which will be, I promise you, should be more than what we would land here. And then anything over that, and my understanding is they can move that time into, to, to a sick leave to pay for their, I'm sorry, that's how many they're, to pay for their, their, um, medical expenses, is what's my understanding. Ranopenny also offers, um, they have a, a policy where they, they compensate employees can, can trade two days for one day's pay. And they can do that yearly, they're required to have, um, three hundred. They're required to have a, they can be paid for as much as a hundred and sixty hours, so they do have a cap on theirs. But they, they can also trade theirs in, um, yearly, so every year in, in September, they can submit a.
They cash it out.
They cash it out, a certain percentage of them.
I just want something that we've, and I'll, I'll lean on Scott, I think, I think I saw in the audience out there, I mean, we put things in policy and where the rubber meets the road is that there is no enforcement, we have no purview on the enforcement side, so we can build policies all day long. But unless you have elected officials that run their offices all the same, it, I, I feel like employees, you know, feel like sometimes they get the short end of the stick if their office is really using sick leave and really doing all those things, because everybody has their own purview. Which is county government, and I know it's frustrating.
Here, here, I'm looking at this chart that absolutely no one else has, so I'm gonna read something from it. Um, the long, just last year, this year, if you had someone retire, had been here thirty-five years, she had one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven point five oh hours of sick leave, which would have been a payout of eighty-two hundred dollars. So if you can see, if we had four or five people like that that would retire the same year, it would, would kill us to pay that out. So, I mean, that's what, that's what we're looking at, I think, is that.
Well, keep in mind that the, the employees that are possibly, and this policy's to address those that, that may have used sick leave.
Right.
So keep in mind that those people, and they, and they all create this county, I promise you, they're dealt with in the sheriff's office. And so those, those individuals are gonna use this time and everybody else, or those that are doing the right thing, and working the way they're supposed to be done, are actually paying the price. I, I think it's fair that the county gives employees something for this time, fifteen percent of their time is, is, is very minimal.
I think we're all in agreement that is, we need to do, I'm concerned with employees and something, just now, where we are, scale, how we give it up.
Well, and if you do that really to be, you know, a good fiscal agent, you need to budget, it needs to be budgeted, we can't just assume it all works out on the end, and there needs to be a cap, um, because they can get out of hand, I would imagine. I, I mean, I understand, and for the tenured employees that are doing the right thing, um, I think, just where it's frustrating is we know every office doesn't operate the same, you're not a traditional employer that HR keeps all the records and sends it out.
Um, I, I think, I don't know if it's unfair to set a cap, I'll tell you, the police, the police department, the, the city may roll, I guess, does, and Ranopenny does, um, they, they pay them better, it's like for, for those that, when they leave and they get this compensation, but. I understand that this is an expensive proposition, but I also think that, that it's worth it, and I think employees deserve something for their time that they're not using.
I need to, I will not disagree with you, yeah.
I'm agreeing.
I'll just need to come up with a, a policy that can work.
Let's keep working on it, let's keep working on some kind of cap.
Well, let me, we should have a session, if we keep working on this, this was gonna happen, we're gonna be ready to get down the road.
Yeah.
And not, not be grass about it, but.
Let's do some timelines, I think.
We're in a, we're being in a budget fox.
That's why, yeah, that's why we want to do it now, because of the budget.
Right, and what you're doing now is saving the budget for it.
Well, but we didn't add any of this money into the budget, did you, Karen?
I wouldn't even, I mean, I would think you would have to do a little homework to figure out how much to even add in there. I would think we would have to go back and look at our employee tenure, look at hours of what's already kind of in the bank, right? And how many people would qualify, how many hours are in there, and at least get a good figure and not just throw a number out there, I mean, to really be able to plan appropriately, would be my thinking.
How many employees do we have that are retired in twenty years, on the average, yearly, do we know?
I don't know. Yeah, because if you're saying the minimum to be eligible is ten years, I mean, we need to count of how many employees are ten years or over, kind of.
We can also, there's also two policy suggestions, and one of them goes to twenty years. So now you got a very ten year employee, you got somebody that's, that's only stuck out here, if you wanna move back to twenty-five years, I don't think that's up to, really, to retire in twenty years is, is. In this, it just doesn't add very much. It is, I think, I think Lawrence is gonna flip to have an alternative, it needs to be looked at sooner than later, because here we are in the budget, and then next year, we'll be in the same spot again.
Do you wanna keep this in the budget, because I think.
We'll keep it in the budget, we'll come back to that.
Okay. Anywhere you're working.
Alright, number ten, A, these on their contract, consider an act upon proposed thirty day extension of the county's contract, eighteen months or so. Has I helped with this and decided that we would post come this for another thirty days or maybe even until the end of the, end, end of the vacant cycle, when the new year starts? There was more still doing stuff on, some investigation.
Right?
Right.
Okay, so are there any procurement laws, I mean, I just, I know our last action was low misinvested or, or, you know, at the table, right? I, I don't, are there any parameters that we need to be mindful of?
The board has a right to reject all of these. Board also has a right to award the bid.
Right.
Or not, if the board's ready to.
I'm just saying, I'm not sure that we, as a court, can articulate why we're rejecting the bid, like.
That's what we're waiting for.
Okay. Okay, okay.
So I need a, a motion on this.
Okay.
Motion and second on favorage yes, or zero. Thank you. Number eleven, R F P one one eight four dash one nine facilities janitorial services to consider and act upon avoiding costs. For thousand one one eight four dash one nine, S M I facility services, doesn't always surprise the, they know. Mr. Wade.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. So, Chris and I.
Hi.
Worked in the, to help me out with writing up a, a, getting it put out. The reason that they came to me, uh, I was put in charge of the, the solo staff. And I've had some issues that went through, um, people we were, all of them, you know, just your kind of manager of time issues. But never really been able to do much about it, others, they don't be that, you're the ride up, you know, had some, uh, some people leave. Because they couldn't find people to watch, uh, we, we're one retired, you have to go back to a full night shift. Instead of a half day, half night. It just seems anytime somebody wasn't here watching, you know, the night, the night staff or some time, things weren't being done. Really getting complaints from departments, hey, why, why does my trash don't get taken out? Why is my sweat, why is my food on the commissioner's breakfast table? Just things like that. So, uh, I started digging around and looking to see how much we were paying for it. Could we outsource it? And as of right now, the lowest responsive there, if you ever get a contract from, say, the county. Three hundred and thirty-one thousand, thirty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. So, uh, we don't have any other contracts that I've entered, so we save that much money if I ever have a contract. And the total savings, we would also save an additional nine thousand one hundred and supplies. That would kick it up to three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Uh, I don't want anyone to lose the cost, that's not, that's not gonna happen. I think there's another opportunity to do a four month deadline work. I don't know what point it's part of county responsible. Long as we return on investment, I don't think we're beating three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars worth of janitorial services. I don't know what we're currently at. It's only up to the court, and I will continue to manage and invest my ability if, if that's what you decide.
Okay.
Right now, this will affect nine.
What's your total?
It'll actually, one will be brought on day Chris, so it will actually affect eight. It'll affect the ninth one, just in the way of our, you know, the, the working hours will change. But eight ultimately, like, is what it will affect.
How, how long is S, S M I, S M I gonna be visiting?
It's on their, their sheet, and I, I, I don't remember. I know that they clean other government agencies. They clean, uh, primarily their, Mexico is where they do most of their, their work. They have a branch office, logos, uh, of, or even, yeah, that's what they do as government facilities, so. I still bring hope that, just saying, you know, anyone can let you down, but at least with the contractor, my thought is, if they let us down, we don't have to help.
So how do we transfer our employees to the new S M I?
The way that, that we, I've talked to, to K as well, you know, S M I would, would have to staff a workforce. So they would, they could reach out to the company board here, they're not gonna make as much. There's, there's no other custodian in this technical field that makes the things that we do today. So they, they would, they could stay working and take a, a cut, they'd probably not have there the benefits, you know, that, that they have here. Now, this would take effect and talk to number one. Uh, if somebody walks out, they'll walk out, if they stay till October one, they'd be eligible for, uh, uh, funding. So, it, it would definitely be a transition that, that I would wanna tell them, I don't wanna wait, just give them two weeks' notice. I would wanna, I would wanna talk through with our current staff, probably have a meeting or two with, with H R, I just don't know. I would say at least two of them are eligible for retirement, you know, so that.
Out of those, uh. How many of those, and you feel that, not, uh.
Out of those eight, I have had issues with. Four. One, well. Eight positions, I had issues with four. One is just retired, but that position still needs to be built, so. And, and, and here, the, the issues are, it's not that they're hard issues, it's, they're strange issues. Uh, one of the people who used the service elbow way, their home maintenance has access to, put a chair in there, show the doors asleep for some hours.
Was that person still with, with us?
They, I was not allowed to, uh, let that person go when I found that out. Uh, that's when Vaughn was placed back on that crew.
Or you mean you weren't allowed?
I was the assistant, yeah, and I was told to put Vaughn back on that crew to supervise. So, um, of course, that stopped, I never caught that, I think, period. It makes me feel like I'm teaching them how to be responsible. And I don't think that that's, I shouldn't have to come up here at one o'clock in the morning, no one should. I don't, I don't think that that's something, not for that much money, you know, I think they're working for free.
Okay, and, yeah, and I appreciate that, uh, how you gave those permissions, well, and saying to me, look, we dropped these, all these issues. But we did, we did not terminate these, you know, probation, that effect. Uh, are we going to the, uh, the K I with the panel?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We're doing a whole set of things, so we got a few employees, half employees are not appropriate, uh, doing what they're supposed to be doing. So are we going to rid the whole department, uh, ex-section of the department, possible school? Well, it almost, we're doing, uh, uh, appropriate, uh, answer, uh.
You've got, you've got people that, you've got people that, uh, that, uh. I don't know how to do it any other way than to do it in a whole crew, you know, so, yes, it could be. I don't know how to do half or not all, you know, with something like this.
Even a hybrid model, where maybe, um, you use the vendor or, you know, manpower, if you will, to help alongside, right? So you're really rewarding the, the employees that are doing their work appropriately, right? And you, as the department leader, take care of the ones that are not. And maybe there's a hybrid model of subtype, that they would work alongside the night shift. To really get your hands around what that might look like, as opposed to a full overhaul of just the night shift.
Is there a lead person that can be performed?
There is.
Okay, for both the day and night shift, including the outside, so is that lead person not doing there?
The lead person is clean, and that's true, I usually don't have a problem with, so the lead person can't wash their mouth, you know, can't wash their mouth.
Well, I mean, I would just think that the fact that it's on the agenda, and we're obviously talking about this in open court. I would imagine employees are very aware this affects them at, at this point, or they will be in short order.
I haven't told them.
So I think that, you know.
I'm just concerned with, uh, employees. I have to, are there, are there other positions for your good employees in the county? That, uh, S M I would, would not be covered?
Like the four that are doing well?
Yeah.
Couldn't you tell me that S M I would, would allow them to?
They, yes, they would look at, they would look at the entire staff.
They would interview and see if they would want to keep them. It's probably, I would be, I'm sure S M I, I'm not the candidate.
I don't have to talk about them to the working world.
That's what I'm asking, if we could use the good employees to keep their benefits as they are in a different position, a different part of the county. Or maybe even the same position, but in a different building.
I, if, if, if the three hundred and forty thousand was, if you want me to move forward with saving that. And before we just did, we can do that. If you want me to not do that, I'll move forward and continue trying to, I just felt like it was, I needed to kind of bring that to life.
I mean, it takes some problems there, the rest of it, I'm not, I'm not able to, but then you just get to the side, you're gonna run. People, individuals, and, uh, individuals gotta get moving, at least have, get to their jobs the way that you have required them to do. Without probably any, uh, uh, steps at all, now we're going to, uh, liquidate those employees and say, okay. Still have an opportunity to be interviewed at S M I, less wages and less benefits, and I didn't do that at all. So I'm just trying to find, like, there's some kind of hacky medium here, with that, with that. Again, cost savings, I have, I'm almost requesting that, but if we have anything to do with that, it would be a compromise, so, um, uh, we'll be careful.
I get the human side of it, if this was, uh, hey, I wanna get rid of the quality cars, you know, like, I get it, that's people, so.
Could you take that back, Nick, and could you do some thinking on what that might look like, right? Like maybe, to your point, Commissioner, you know, maybe there's something kind of county, county-wide that you can look at the structure. You know, add to an example of a hybrid type of model out there, and then Commissioner Vaughn had a couple of points. Is that something you could take back and do some thinking on?
Sure, I, I, sure, uh, I can do, I, I can do whatever, whatever needs to be done. I, I think we, we probably need to adjust or do something with, with this bid. Don't we need to say yea or nay?
Can we just, yeah, you can just say.
Okay.
I mean, and to be serious, I, I, I don't envy your position with you, frankly, because I, I followed you at, at this, and now. In your lap, that's the, uh, head.
No, I'm not throwing my hands up, I don't mind, that's part of the job. I just, when I started looking at numbers, I was going, you know, it was actually higher before I had people quit and retired, so. I was shocked with that.
And I'm assuming you've got appropriate documentation, you've been working with H R, all of that is, and that's my baseline too, for the four that are not performing. Okay.
Judge Jackson.
You know, several years ago, we had outside a, they cleaned our office. We had, and I don't know if they cleaned other county offices, I don't know if we had janitorial services from outside for other buildings beside my, I don't have any. I just know they had my, and I know that former Dick came in through a fit and they fired him. And, and, and so, and I had no say so, and we were working with the guy to change. You know, because he's only, in his defense, he was only cleaning two days a week. We can't put somebody out there cleaning five days a week and expect him cleaning two days a week to beat that. It's not gonna happen, so, uh, it was just, he walked out, they're fired. People he replaced me with, I'm sorry, I don't do any better job five days a week than he did two days a week.
Do you still have those people?
Yeah, so you want somebody. But it's just, do I still have who? The county people or the contract?
Contract.
No, they're, they fired, they didn't know I was.
So we have county people, the county employees?
Not county people.
The day-to-day person that.
We don't have that. So anyway, you know, Nick said he could save the county money by putting in, apparently it's not, so, I mean, just to give you some information. I don't know, possibly the only one that had it outside.
Oh, look, here we have the sheriff now.
I don't know what's gonna happen.
Yes, sir.
I'm just throwing this out there, I'm gonna be helping myself, and it's really, doesn't affect me. But it may affect county companies and businesses, anybody that has, see, just, uh, equipment, these people will all have to be.
It's a, it's a good package, I make sure that they knew they had to be fingered, and, and.
I just wanted to make sure.
I was thinking about you. So we can.
I mean, we'd like to do some thinking on it, I don't think anybody's disagreeing with the employee issues that you're, that you're having. Um, I would imagine, this being an agenda item, people's attention will be very heightened, um, if you're really using their positions. I would be.
And I know you said, Judge, that it was going to be a little bit of a substitution, uh, put it in, uh, uh, put it wrong. Is that S M I, just, just count, was going to, the dealers going to probably know that a hundred, uh, a hundred K less than, uh.
Might be around there.
Should say be able to, did, did, did they already know that we were going to, uh, to add?
No, 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 we were just talking in, in budget, carrying on, about kind of easing the middle, a little bit, not going with the absolute lowest bid, but maybe adding one, but just in case. You know, in case we need a little bit extra plus. And, uh, you know, they are, they're very, very low bidding.
I would rather use another, uh, the next highest, but I have no reason to do that, no legal reason, just, and only reason I saw.
I just have to figure out if they'd be able to facilitate to do this, sort of, with the amount that they're getting.
They did, they walked through, they did, no matter building.
Walked through every building, all of it, right?
They all did, yeah.
And, uh, I'd say they're about almost a hundred K less than the next, uh, year.
Well, I don't know if this is the right answer, but a lot of times when you see that cost savings, you know, they can pay employees less. And that may not be appropriate for the vendor, I don't wanna speak to this vendor, I don't know anything about it, but usually sixty percent of your, the cost is salaries. So that means employees get paid less.
I would be willing to bet that every one of those vendors will pay less than what.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, I'm just talking about less than, than your slate, and I don't know if that's fair, because I don't know whether they're in their price points, but that's usually what you see. When you see those type of big shifts in cost savings, that comes down to her employees' pay, is how you get those cost savings.
All right, so what do you wanna do?
I don't know, that's, that's, we need some kind of.
Well, we can leave it open, right? We can leave the bid open, and you've got all this dialogue, and maybe some feedback to think about what that might look like. I, I think we're all concerned about the employees that are performing well and have been good employees for the county.
Do you want me to come back, set a date, and bring it back up? Or do you just want me to randomly, I'm asking.
All over random. Well, I think it could be, for me, obviously, for me, that, I, I think it's hard to know that until we know what, you know, what you're thinking with all this feedback, right? Depending on what your proposal might be.
I think what I'll do is, is I can go back and look at what Vaughn said, I can reward, good or bad.
Yep, and then is there a transition for someone else? Is there a hybrid?
Hybrid.
Or?
And like, like now, they, it's out there, they're gonna know about it, so. My improved performance.
I'm not concerned with that, I just want to present it.
But, but let me, let me, let me ask you this, Nick, Nicholas. Um, these, these guys, S M I said they would work like four hours a evening, they'd be done. So if you keep, if you keep some of our guys, so our guys are gonna get paid through S M I for four hours a night. So they're gonna take a cut in that.
They said that, this is quoting the, the, the group that they're off. Never, for amounts I'm concerned, you never work them for five hours a night. Because if you're losing from that, that remaining three hours, you're going to be in touch. I don't know. I, I just have to trust that that's somebody's all experience.
For the company to say, well, that's.
Well, I mean, maybe look at your staffing structure. If they can do it in four hours, you know, do you need eight? Do you need the four that are performing well, and there's some compensation that you can do? I mean, I always take a personal, you know, cut, I mean, those are traditionally the lower end of the salary range, right? So it's always harder when you start with that.
Right, 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 four times.
Say that you call about the department, so.
He said that they work four hours.
So now, since the other, did you hear what I, here's what I'm hearing. You keep your four good guys, a couple of them, and do, and do part-time. They're not missed out, helping them. We're still going to get part-time pay and all that.
Most of the, most of ours.
And how I took that is, I wonder if there's an opportunity for the four, you know, that are performing well, and maybe a couple that are underperforming. They go to part-time, you get some cost savings there, you know, people's awareness is heightened, it's gotten here for discussion, for real action, got a bid out there. I would be surprised if things don't shift, my own personal.
I can, I can bring it back. I can do some homework, you know, I can, I can, whatever, do different scenarios, you know.
Okay.
I, I'd be better if I had a deadline, so.
Okay. Other month, yes.
We need, yeah, we don't have, we don't have a month.
This is not, this is not going to affect it, other than the saves.
Yeah, it'll save.
We already, we already have that figured in.
Yeah, the cover is, yeah.
It's in the final, I'll say, right?
Well, I did it both ways, so, you know, I did.
You're saying that we have to, it's already out of the budget, the savings is included, so we need to add it back once we start our budget, you add it back. So we have real numbers as we're talking through what budget looks like. Okay? Thirty weeks is what you said.
So budget, budget stays the same? And then thirty days I come back, right?
I think.
So I'm going to say, just to give you two weeks. We gotta, we have to have some in the whole thirty days.
Yeah, two weeks.
Yeah.
Two weeks. Now we're.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, we're gonna, hang, hang on a second. Did we put you down for projects, if you had any in there? Never mind, never mind. Number twelve is county budget, we'll come back to that in a second. Number thirteen, employment items, Golden Bridge, the reservation at Dennis Miller, Summer Moore, second July eighth, twenty nineteen. Maintenance facilities, the hiring of Zachary Townsend, his name is one, is replacement for Michael Star, second July fourth. The hiring of Sam Mesa, his maintenance technician, two, is replacement for Jason Phillips. The hiring of Courtney Davis, his maintenance technician, is replacement for Renee Ostra. The salary increase for pay workers for Serna, assistant project for Solis, twenty, second July fourth, twenty nineteen. And the resignation, retirement of David Quinton, his floor technician, number three, third day, August twenty eighth, twenty nineteen. Why don't we put that on the mail? Okay. Okay, so any motion on that? Second? Motion on second, I'll pay it. Yeah, it was part of county projects.
So, we probably, uh. Some changes, still very, there are two buildings down that used to be standing. I did my best, some of the dumpsters, uh, tractor, and cleaned up as much as I could. Which was, the green ground, the ground, uh, stretched hatter, which was, very, very, kind of, took a little small tour of the place. How standing gravel, put together a bin to completely clean up the rest of that area. And I have it right here, it's eight thousand dollars, and it's a very basic bin. And in dates, I couldn't get it on, it didn't, other than in projects, so, you know, what's up with that? Do we come from, do we come from grounds?
And you have an amount in there for that?
I do. I just, for five, so I really need to let you guys know.
And so that is, Nick, to be clear, that is the actual, the collapsed building, this is your demo, that's the area of cleaning up.
Yes, that back corner of the building. One of those?
What about the area, what about the area, so that we were probably about going in and looking at doing a, uh, clean sweep? All the, uh, instructions that's in that facility, and, uh, putting them out on, uh, auctions or pay or something to, to remove all that, we're probably not going to be doing that.
There's a handful of stuff that has already been, that I'm compiling, so it can be approached to discuss. We're, we're doing auctions, we're doing, we start another auction this week.
Those, all we do, something.
Yes.
But I think to your point, Commissioner, there is quite a bit of old equipment out there. I think that's your question is, what's the cleanup of all the old stuff that really isn't slated for auction? Because what we learned during the tours, we're obviously paying for pest control services, those type of things on those buildings, that may not be good expense, and there are some, quite a few old items that don't even look like a value, right? But they're sitting in our property, and we maintain it.
I need to get with Chris, and Chris and Oliver, Daniel, whoever's working, we need to go out there and say, okay, this needs to go, this, you know, we haven't, we haven't gone out and done a sweep of everything out there, and I haven't contacted everyone that, you know, has property out there, so, that, that needs to probably happen. This would cover the actual grounds, the, you know, the debris, the grounds that are out there, how it'll kind of, so.
And Sheriff, we found two cars out there, you can have those.
There is, really.
They're really cool. There's no windows, there's only one door.
So if we have a, if we look at having a field day, and, uh, identify all those departments that have any ownership in those, equipment out there, those facilities, just do a field day and do it all at one time. And it's, 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 it's.
Is that new? Probably. The old, uh, GPS going out there? There's the GPS, and then there is kind of like a lumber building that, uh, I don't know what the, it's a lumber building, but it has shares. Sorry, I didn't know what you got.
Surprise.
So, you know, lumber building. It has any of the Eagle stuff in it, and it has police, like the old style.
Mickey, Mickey Black, when these come out, they're pretty cool.
Well, you know, I mean, okay, thank you.
It's good that you got it, uh, I feel like it's great.
The, the, these are good people. I mean, I feel like it's, you know, when he drove out there, he said, oh, that's, that's not the basic, I'm covering downstairs and the floor. It was, it was, you know, a large portion, I just, my back's important. I just don't have anything, the, uh, the, 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 uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, so.
All right, thank you, Nicholas.
And you have your improvements?
I would like them to. We have a roof. Of the bid, standing here.
Oh, yeah, I think I put it in.
That way I can call them and tell them to get cleaned up before a build day.
You didn't have a motion?
No.
Oh, you did have a motion, I'm a second.
Second.
I have a motion, I'm a second. Does somebody else?
Commissioner Vaughn made the motion.
Oh, oh, you did? I didn't hear, what, what was that? I have a motion on second, all in favor, is he in? Four to zero, thank you so much.
You might grab some more, not so pictures, of that, that'd be interesting.
All right, number fifteen, jail report, thank you, Nicholas. Fifty, five hundred, five hundred and forty-eight people in our jails, seventy-six guilty male, all there is far down. Eighty-four percent defendants, ten percent on this demand. Do we have any insurance on this, Nicholas? No insurance. Executive session, no jail items for next time.
We have the, for the next one, Judge, the financial advisor topic, which was going to happen this time, I think, Chad, you were taking that one. It was our third party, Ben Carr, Vaughn, we did the first one.
Uh, I, I believe we do.
Okay.
I, I believe what we're going to do is, we're talking about, officials working on RFPs, and the city, the chief of which said to go out for the RFP.
But there was questions in the evening, that was our third party, and we had it. So that'll be next. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so going back to, uh, number twelve, county budget, we have a budget workshop meeting, and a commission courtroom for review, and discussion of departmental budgets, permission from the county, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, general budget, and taking action. All right. Uh, we gotta just take a break, let's take a ten-minute break, and back, yeah, recess until eleven. Okay, it is eleven thirty, we are back in session. All right, just to go with the usual, um, every year we do this, um, everyone produces our budget to carry. I go to Carrie's office about four or five times, we go through it. I'm after cuts, right before I see, uh, necessary. And what we've done so far is that we have to raise taxes four point eight, four point five eight percent just to break even. Already thing, that's a little out of my range, I hate going that high, but we made, you know, five percent, I think. So we're going to start with each individual department in our book that we have here, starting with county judge, there are no changes. Judge, one question, if this is on the new, if the area gains today, we have a little.
I'm going with my old one, but I got one right here too.
Okay. So we'll do, but, yes, it's the same page, page ten. Uh, sorry.
It is actually page two, Nicholas.
Page two?
Page two. Here, so I have, I have no changes in my budget. So you can move on to the next one, Commissioner, so there's no changes in yours. All right, correct? Do you have a resource? Katie is asking for an additional employee for the payroll assistant. And I allowed that, she needs some help over there. Okay, he had the, okay, he's here, I thought you weren't going.
No, I'm, I'm waiting until after my budget, and then I'll.
Okay.
So you included a position?
I have included that position in.
And.
I have included that.
Yes.
We did that too, right, Carrie, you guys included, yes.
And if that position again is, uh, efficient to help the.
With payroll.
Yes.
And then also take a lot of the, the weight off the entire, after our staff, we're going to spread this out.
And this will be included in that.
Okay, thank you, Katie. You can go now if you need to.
Yes.
Sorry I catch you.
That's okay.
All right, next one is information technology, we have requested additional staff, and I'll let them in.
And that's the cybersecurity staff position, it's, yes.
And one person?
It's one.
Yeah, it's one.
Information techno, I mean, information records management. Danny Garcia has a, like, sitting in her office, that she's not a woman. She's saying that money can't be taken on to, for the other employees, is that correct, Sandra? I just, Alfonso and I are all, it's a thing, we decide and get, this is good to appoint, but then cannot come back next year, or you're in, asked for another position. It's for all of you, anybody, anybody that's doing this, can't come back, and then just continue to, 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 to.
If, if you're to say, if you stayed that, in your, uh, in your, uh, budget, that you will not need that person or that position, and you're not looking to need that subsequent years, at least one to three years, moving out, with, uh, sort of, sort of like, kind of, voting?
So Judge, what you have in there is, um, Sandra has an open position that she's not filling, and she's going to take those dollars, spread it out. And I have in my notes that that still would bring thirty-three thousand dollars of savings. You're not taking all of that dollar, you're taking some of it and putting thirty-three thousand of savings into the budget, right?
Digital.
Okay. Okay.
All right, any questions on that? And. General administrative expenditures, radio, maintenance, the radio equipment, that's all radios for every department that has maintenance. Two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars just maintenance.
And Carrie, um, I know you sent me that amount, that will be going up year to year, so I just, I want to call it out because it's how vendors make money, I mean, just the truth. So they will, we will have, the price point will be cheap upfront, and then we might have like a cheap year of maintenance, and then years three, four, and five, like, that number is really going to increase. So it's, it, I mean, it caught my attention, the amount of maintenance required for that line item.
And then we reduced the amount of, um, redistricting expenses, we came down from fifty thousand to forty thousand. And we also reduced the, um, seven nine eight zero zero civil litigation, litigation council from thirty thousand to fifteen thousand. Okay? County auditor, we have nothing here, no changes. County treasurer, no changes. Purchasing agent. He has asked for a, um, twelve thousand, five hundred dollar software, or two, um, two bids electronically, or like.
Yeah.
Instead of the big package, they have to sit down to be good all, whole run.
And then they can also do under management, uh, they can do stories, uh, they can do tabulations, everything can be done.
Excellent. This shouldn't have been done years ago.
Yes, it should have.
All right, so I'll let that, so I was, I'll let that in. Any questions on that? Collections? I talked to Laura. Project meeting. Laura, would you like to explain to, to Carrie at least, the, uh, process that you go through, and who you're with right now, and what happened?
Um, I'll ask, get tracing information that we can, we use Accurate now. Um, Accurate has historically been thirty to sixty days back, so even if you try to use that information, sometimes it's not even there yet. Um, we have been using, um, the finance services to, um, to notify someone gets out of jail. No ports, our collections department, sorry, we are not allowing to use those anymore. I guess they had a bunch of everybody putting in, so they took that option away from us. I spoke with a vendor from Clear, and I don't know where it's at, but they are also skip tracing company. And I think they are similar to what, um, Brandon Purdue, or one of those third-party outsourced vendors do. Um, only it's, and, instead of the charge going to the defendant, the thirty percent add-on per case, it will be something that they can't wait to pay. They have, we have access to, um, social security records, and since, so we, if someone who's deceased, so we can find these people, you can still do the county and, um, city jails, they still have access though to state, um, or federal prisons. Um, they have, we can have access, there's real-time access, and we can do, um, the reverse vocal, um, locations. It was just. A lot of the stuff that they, they have now, that they're offering, we don't have access to, to finance. So, uh, the clause was, um, I, I don't have my notes, but.
Three sixty. How much?
Seven thousand three sixty.
Seven thousand three hundred and sixty a year? Seven thousand three hundred and sixty a year?
And that was for three licenses.
And why, why would we do that instead of just going to a third-party, like using a partnership we already have, like Purdue? Why would we not just use that partnership and let them use their own?
We had, we had talked about that several years back, and the main issue was, um, defendants that aren't paying now, because they think the amount is too high or whatever, for whatever reason. Purdue Brandon adds a thirty percent add-on to what they owe. The county, they just, county doesn't have any money to use a third-party vendor, all of the money goes to the defendant. And if they're not paying us, you know, it's hard, I mean, and I don't know what their, what the turnaround rate is, I, I really don't, 'cause I haven't looked into it in years, but. They're gonna, at whatever they owe, it's gonna be thirty percent more. If they have three or four cases, it's gonna be thirty percent on each case.
Is that a search warrant?
So the program that you use today is going to be gone, or you no longer have access to it?
Why, yes, correct. And Accurate, the one that we use, the other one that we use, um, as long as I've been here, it's been fifty dollars a month. They are now increasing their monthly amount to a hundred and fifty a month. Um, we still don't have access, nearly the, the amount of access that we, well, that we clear, and they're always at least thirty to sixty days behind on their information.
So you might as well have fifty dollars a month, uh, issue balance, which three, uh, something.
They sent, they just sent out a notice that said that they hadn't increased their prices to, um, to those of us that were using it in many years, and so I guess they just said that they had increased the amount on it.
And Judge, do we wanna be making, um, software purchases? Uh, I, I know that there was some legislative work on the collection department, but I don't know enough about it yet, I'm still kinda getting some more. We will, I don't know.
Yeah, one of the officials that made us do that years ago, made us have that department, have an access, I don't think.
You didn't do what?
That department, that's collections. Yeah, that's a, that's a.
Except for, except for what you see.
Well, the JP, see, Kerry initially, this department can do, they, before, they, they can do all the collections for everybody, but JP's. And collections department does, I'll do the other.
I guess that's my only question, is just, do we wanna be making those purchases right now until we figure out what that looks like?
Yeah, I don't know, but she just told me about describing.
Yeah, well, that's what I, that's what I know about, let's be.
Sheriff, what about y'all, y'all used, y'all have somebody that does the bond?
We, we are tied into the bond, and it's, it's through our system. But we use Accurate today, we're detectives, and I haven't heard the increase in a hundred bucks, that's the first we've heard of that.
And, and Laura, you told me that Clear, uh, subscription is real-time.
Right.
It's real-time, you're absolutely know that someone lives at, and that is not, it's not old, I'm sure. How do they do that? Do they know?
Set a lot. Like, I don't actually know much, but, I mean, he said, you know, someone moves and they open a new, a new employee account somewhere, it automatically updates their system, so we know right when they do it.
So, I know we have several offices that use the Accurate, Sheriff, our prosecuting offices, our constables, county clerk. This Clear is for cops and ritters, and if it is the direction we need to go, I would prefer to do a county line package of all possible requirements, this is for the law enforcement.
Our is under fifty dollars, it's, it's how you use it too, after fifty dollars, it's, you can use it after fifty dollars, after you reach that fifty dollars, they'll charge you for every service that you do. So it's not necessarily just fifty dollars a month.
Well, I just make sure that we didn't exceed that very often. It, it was hard not to, but I just, I just tried my best not to exceed that fifty dollars a month.
Your job is, this is what you do, you have to find people, so you can send them the letters, tell them I need to come in for help.
So Kerry, you're saying we really don't have enough information right now, that if we really need to look at a county why, if, if all those facts are kind of true, it affects more people than the collections department?
And, and I'm really curious about the data being that old, and a lot of people that are choosing that way as well, are y'all running into any problems?
I don't know, is that, that part of humanity? Nobody's saying anything to me as far as the ones using, so, and I didn't even know what was going on.
Okay, I was passing it out for such a.
Okay, we'll come back. Thank you, thank you, Laura. Nice to center, no changes in colors. So these maintenance, so you just heard what you, and, and how you. Uh, I think, I'll give it a minor raise, correct? Number four, Sarah, I can't.
I kept up a little bit, she's gonna get, uh. I think it's right into, to, back here.
It's twenty-one sixty, or one sixty. It's only page sixty-one. Oh.
Twenty-eight, it's two.
Got any questions on that?
No, well, um, Judge, we'll get to the projects and capital, but we'll get to that later, is that right?
Yes, yes, I did all this, so. Elections, uh, okay, eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen elections, no?
Um, I had something in my notes on elections, was this about sharing a position?
They decided not to do that, right, not okay. It's a longer table. Hang on, I have two books here, I'm trying to get one on that page. So, everything's good in your?
No, thank you. I did wanna check, have you been, Kerry? Um, we have thirty-three thousand, it shows from our capital equipment, and I thought I put that in front two thirty-six, 'cause that was to buy controllers, some additional controllers, so to at least don't take the present usual. And so it's showing here, I just wanna make sure it's not both places, if it's in two thirty-six, it does not need to be in two thirty-four. But, I mean, it really can be in two thirty-six, and that would help. Help me find every.
Controllers.
It's in two thirty-six, I'm not seeing it all there.
Okay, I was going by what you sent me at the office.
Okay. So just, are we, can you take one of them out, or we're good? We're okay.
Okay.
All right. Next one, county clerk, no changes.
She does have that software package in one, two thirty-five.
Yeah, but we're gonna come back to that.
We'll come back, yeah.
Are you doing, yeah. District clerk, no changes in colors, except that, oh, yeah, she's doing, um, she is on a, with one position, correct?
Correct.
One, and it's changing the funding spread now.
Yes.
Same thing goes for, for y'all. Can you come back next year and say your position?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, was there a savings that went, with that, I, I have a note, um, this is still accurate, Kerry, what, what they wanna do in the district clerk's office? Money out, the one position, spread it out, and then get, get rid of one position, is there a savings that comes down to, to that move?
Yeah, what you have said, well, is the insurance on the one position. That, and, and, right, it's thirteen thousand six hundred.
Thirteen thousand, six hundred, okay. And so Judge, along those lines, um, how do we make sure that time doesn't slip away from us, and that we have some type of record of, remember in two thousand nineteen?
We're gonna make a note of that, we're gonna put it on our foreheads.
I'll just say Odyssey is doing its job.
Yes, okay.
And that's the only reason, through attrition of somebody like last year and this year.
Okay. We wanna do the special record, how many is in for second? Fifty-one. Uh, this was the, uh, we're eliminating that, that line out there, actually we're transferring it back to, to, um, Kerry's office, right? This was the attorney, or not the attorney, it was the person that was, uh, assisting me in the docket, the jail docket, in the, in the health docket. And we no longer doing that right now, so we're gonna put that money back with, with, uh, Kerry's. Or Kerry's office.
Okay.
All right. District judges, Judge Shaq wants to, uh, compensate with his goal there, forty-eight hundred dollars, and, um, just shut that out. No changes, we have, or, yes, there's.
We did discuss, I can lend to the maximum county supplement, which will be a small reduction in each court.
That's right. Okay, you wanna explain that, you're running, trying to.
It is, um, the state is the maximum for the district judges. They will pay up to a certain amount depending on tenure, and then counties can pay up to eighteen thousand. If counties pay more than eighteen thousand, the state refuses them, they pay to the judge, so, so they're still locked in that, that maximum salary. Since we were paying over eighteen thousand, uh, we paid it down to match.
So the end of state will figure the difference?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so the state was giving a discount.
I'm surprised we did that, that we would pass the eighteen.
Okay, now we're at the associate judge, this is for the CPS, page twenty-seven, we have, on the new, we have thirty-seven. She is, she doesn't have a bail. Her court hearings are very contentious, so that can be, so it just needs two bail out for three days a week. And so I, we asked if maybe she could use a constable to do this, and she was happy to do that, and be to use a constable, so. It's either that or hire a bail for three days a week, or Laura, someone else's. The original plan was that the district judges said, oh, your fees are, like, a week deal, and that's not happening.
The, what they, it's, uh, the same.
She said, when do you Tuesday or Thursday?
So can you score, would that be a conflict within, within your court?
Most definitely.
This is new to us.
Yeah, this is new to me, most definitely the conflicts, 'cause I head court every Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, when school cases are going, we have them sometimes Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Plus, everything else, we, with the evictions, the amount of evictions, if you look at our revenue, our evictions are way up, and I, you know, I don't know. Which constable's gonna have time?
Can, can we do amongst the constables, have to a?
Like divide it out, like a rotation?
Yeah.
We, we see, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I'd have to sit down, I'd have to sit down probably with my judge to talk to her because.
Would you guys be willing to have that conversation, like the four active constables?
I mean, when school, this, when school starts, and we go to truancy court, I, I'm, I'm busy. Uh, you know, I don't know about the others, but.
He's the most, he is the most busiest out of the four recent winters, because of the truancy. Um, amongst the three of the rest of us, I can only speak on myself, I will be willing to, you know, sit down and look at that. Uh, my court is not as busy, um, and then some other issues that are happening as well, but, um, I wish I would've known, so to have a conversation. Before that was decided or even volunteered or volunteered, but yeah, um, let's, let's have a sit-down.
Yeah, I think a sit-down is appropriate, it would just, um, yeah, I think, I think that was my mistake, I dropped that one, so I, I'll take that as a, definitely.
You know, 'cause I don't know how long child support goes when it's in, does it go all day, does?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's kind of exciting, because we do have active constables, so it's nice to be able to like, look across the bench, right? And say, we have active constables that wanna be in the courtroom, and what does that look like? So that's not always, we've not always had that luxury.
I remember getting an email from Tommy Passmore in county attorney's office about it, but, you know, I, I don't remember if I responded or not.
Yeah, it would definitely be a saving, so we're not getting a new position in the budget, but we can take that as a two-year extension, so we're coming. Well, we'll talk about that.
All right, county clerk, all number one and two, no changes, one, right, they gave us money back, they did ease it all. Uh, JP, one, two, three, no changes, like there's ten thousand dollars out, I think, all out. Kerry. Something on that one, nothing to say, it's a place.
Some things, just, uh, permission for district clerk.
The salaries.
That's why I had a question on that side. All right, county attorney, no changes in yours, right, was there something else, though, that you wanna?
I think there were some soundboard shufflings, but all that's on the, the stretch, you don't put it all there.
One, nine, no change. Yeah, a lot of money, no, no money, no additional money.
I'm sorry.
District attorney. Randall? No, we can't pick up that money, no, we can't, we can't come up with three hundred and eighty thousand of it, what was your proposal?
Uh, we'll find it out.
Explain that.
Uh, it's three hundred and eight thousand, however many years you wanna phase it out. I still hang, I don't have that fortunate, y'all cover some, that year we all covered more, I covered this, next year you cover more, I cover this.
So like year one, you covered two hundred thousand, year two, hundred thousand, is that what you're thinking, step down?
Right. If you want the one fifty, I'll do two hundred, and I'll do another one fifty, and I'll do whatever the level is, y'all add on a hundred and fifty.
Right now, none of that's in the budget, so.
So, I'm saying, I have the, this is, so, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna phase out, or, or, we have some couple of little D E in the first year.
Yes, hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty, right.
Yeah, I'll take.
You pick two, you pick two hundred, you'll, you'll pick up the two hundred, and then we would, uh, we'd get the one fifty for the first year. But they just said, we didn't have money for that. So. I'm trying to figure out, what can, you can phase out.
Here's the busy, here's the position my office is in, I've got two open prosecutor positions already, I can't drop an employee and do anything, I'm running on bare bones. People, I've got, one of those is trial lawyer, and the other one, um, fans are hard to learn to think from me, so as soon as she passes the background test, will she, will she, uh, I'll, 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 I'll be lawyers. So, and I'm not gonna have anybody to replace that. I've got young hu, I've got young kids in, they're not ready, I'll try to, we'll, we'll try to put in a. Younger lawyer in, in court, um, and if, if not somebody else standing on their mistakes, I mean.
So given that, and, uh, now, I, I ask you a question. What would you do, you were sitting on this side? I don't know, something creative, that, um. Phase out, you're ready.
It's created, but, um, that's, again, we're getting back to your, and it's that, that court cannot house something.
I know that.
Okay. So that makes it difficult. And that makes it very difficult for us to come up with a hundred and eighty thousand dollars this year, and what if we can't do it next year? You know what I'm saying? I mean, we can't promise, we cannot promise.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, and no disrespect, but you gotta look at priorities, and what's, what's gonna cost you money, what's not gonna cost you money. And I'm telling you, the lack of prosecutors is gonna cost you money, particularly with the jail pending the cases. And this court.
I don't know that there's an answer, um, but I don't think there's an answer for any of that. There's no... I have a printout here of some, some cases that we looked up, some other counties that got the same size, some are different. And starting out, in their DA's office, or starting out attorneys make heck of a lot, but who's your customer?
And I've got a county right next to me making twenty-two thousand dollars more and seventeen-five more per person. Randall, can?
Well, they don't have the crown, they're probably happy with that, and they can get their jobs done. I don't know what to say, Randall, I mean, I really don't, I don't know what to say. Probably didn't read it.
I, I, I don't know what to tell them.
Anybody have any suggestions?
I don't see any of that, issues by yet.
I mean, you know, I'm, I'm trying to be careful with my comments, you know, because I knew we would get here in the crossroads, right? When we fast forward, you know, you have access, he has access to dollars, and not every department does. So I knew this would happen, and I, I always get personally discouraged, cuz who sits in the middle is employees, right? And that's always hard. So I mean, I would lean on your discernment, Judge, of what you would like to do, and for me personally, I would support them.
You just, you just have so much, so much of your work, right? Put it forward, so, you said four and a half percent?
You're trying, you're saying max out?
Hmm?
Saying max out.
So you don't, you don't need to raise taxes, to increase budgets, so I can pay your people? And who's, who's the media gonna come to? Why don't they come to you? They're gonna come to me, and go, why did you raise taxes so high?
Do you want experienced lawyers, or no lawyers?
Exor, you were saying something?
No, I'm just saying, just, just so much money in the budget that can be dispersed, haven't I? It can kind of track. You know, we're just, uh, looking at five percent increase in taxes.
Next year is gonna be three point five.
We're gonna eliminate nobody.
Next year will be three point five, and nobody's gonna get anything.
What is this, uh, drug course supplement, Carrie, what was that one?
That's a brand that C S D can have available.
Okay. All right, what would you do? We're gonna do general judicial right now, I'll come back. Come back?
A couple of things we have is, um, an extra hundred and fifty thousand for the...
Okay, yeah. Yeah, cuz the judges are paying hourly wages now instead of a salary. So, yes, a little bit of compensation. Okay, you're down to the constables, then constable three, seat one, two, three, and four, ask for, ask for, um, release for me, time of walking someone in, uh, something that I have to say. This is my first time. You're calling, okay. County Sheriff, we need to transfer those cars at some point, but you have asked for, well, let's talk about the cars first, and you can tell us about your expenditure for April.
Um, we actually have, uh, we have twelve vehicles that's on the table. They were all on one sheet, all the, the two vans, we'd like to, um, replace them, and we'll throw them up, uh, the comments. Again, reasoning with, because they are four and a half, and we're, we're looking at at least a year for the, we've got to replace two motors, and we can also afford to reduce them. They're just, they're just not working out very well.
Chair, what's the comparison of the van prices compared to the towels, what's the difference? The vans or towels?
Vans, they're, they're, they're cheaper than, uh, thirty-five thousand.
How much?
Thirty-five thousand.
And how much for the towel?
Oh, you think they're forty?
Yeah, they're about five.
Let me ask you a question, do you have vans that could last about thirty years or two?
Well, that's what I'm saying, well, hey, well, on top of, can't you pay for two towels, I don't know, a commissary?
I'd be arrested.
Scott said, I'm going, go ahead, buddy. The commissary has to be used for...
Is money, right? Has to be used...
Has the benefits of, and, that's all you're lacking.
And the towels back at the end?
Trade for inmates as a van.
And, no. Don't they get a ride in them? It's a benefit of it.
It's constantly riding.
But initially, they get a ride in the towel, right?
Not as quite as often as we do the vans. See where you're going, it's a nice thought.
But that was a good thought, that was a good, that was a good thought.
You can ask them next year. I don't wanna go, I like to visit, but I don't always like to be part of it.
Okay, so, so you asked for twelve, I'll cut it down to...
Six.
Six.
Why don't we, why don't we cut this one out, and make it seven? If you'd be okay with seven, you'd be okay with seven.
I'll pick nine, so do seven, and most of all, I'll do two thousand, two million.
And then what about April?
That was the other, that was our, that was the deal on just...
She was changing bargaining chip.
Yeah, she was my bargain, and, and she knows the extraordinary reward to keep up with all of our training personnel. Uh, she's the only one, we can't really shift that to somebody else, who's been all of our training personnel.
So how would this change, how would this change the, the budget here for your adding, adding another car?
I mean, April is less than two thousand, so not ten thousand.
And the April, is that what you were saying, what is in the budget, um, the increase for eleven thousand for that training, that's the April topic you're coming up with? So you still have that in?
I still have it in, cuz of the bargain. He begged me, yeah. I want, I want my bargain, cuz he was gonna use commissary money.
So the two vans?
Yeah.
But now that we're adding another car, is
Yeah.
that's still, like, are we still keeping the eleven thousand for the training personnel? With seven?
Uh, she's talking.
Your mom is trying to be earlier about what's happening.
She's not that good, she may sound like me. Um, can, can we come down a little bit on the angles?
Right? There's gotta be a heat in the middle, we don't have that.
There's maybe, so, your additional van, additional vehicle, not being up. And, and it's not team seven, why not be one? Bring her down to, uh, seven, six, one more? I don't know.
Yes.
Seeing how they're not talking a lot.
We're gonna need a...
Yes. So you're adding the seventh for the fleet, and then taking the eleven thousand down to six?
Okay. Is that good?
That's it, seven.
Does that say seven? She started. I heard six.
There's three sixty-five.
Okay.
That's how you do it, that's how you do it, and you do it with a smile. Okay, so what does that bring, bring it to? It should, it should not be moving that much. All right, Sheriff, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Other terms. I have a call into Jill Bomer right now, and then she, she said, uh, ask her if we're actually, if we're using our money? And I haven't heard. And what's that?
Do you even go back and talk about our towels? Can we order them?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah. Oh, that's fine, we have to go back to that agenda, I won't.
Yeah. So we can get on with this.
Do you need a motion, Judge?
Yes. I'd make a motion to approve the pre-ordered, uh, police package vehicles for the sheriff's office plans to come, you know, the county federal corporate jury.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, I'll favor Regent Hand, or the other. Thank you, Sheriff Bummer.
Sorry, yes.
So to answer your question on that, um, yes, Judge, I sent that presentation back to you, and there are some big projects that are happening. We're talking about the neighborhood plan, that's what we're talking about. Big projects in north, same thing in east, San Jacinto is now, so it is in three of our precincts. Future plans, that are definitely not even a minimum, you know, the cost.
Okay, I'll, uh, put it back here, yeah. Okay, okay. Any, uh, any comment from anybody? And Sheriff, you compare that? So now, fire rescue? Returners? Do you ever feel like you're the luckiest man in the world?
Yeah, sometimes.
So you're asking for two positions for the new fire station, correct?
Yes, and two positions for the fire department area, where everyone's...
And those are thirty-eight thousand each, and I have, they're coming out of cat funds. Okay?
I'm perfectly fine to do that, I'm in that way, I just wanna make sure that we've come down to permanent positions.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There is, there was one thing, uh, the ten thousand dollar line item, and I have a question mark, new training facilities?
It's not a new training facility. Um, in two thousand and three, the Emerald Fire Department built a new drill park out there, base. And everybody has just been using it for the last sixteen years, everybody's just been using it. And, uh, the building has fallen into disrepair last year while we were, it's a lot of fire training for the Panthers Fire Department. A section of the roof fell down, and here it killed some people. So, it brought to light a whole bunch of issues coming out with the use of the training facility. And what we have done is to put together a consortium, where we sat down, and basically every fire department in the area has to have a training facility, and every fire department in the area uses an envelope, so we all have put together a plan pertaining to the amount of use that we do, where we pay our fair share of maintenance money back to the city to be able to have access to a calendar, that we can use the building basically whenever we want.
And I'm assuming in the city's budget, they also have a line item, that they're, are, are they taking on a share of this too? Their firefighters use the facility as well?
It's there.
Right, right.
It's their facility, and that's what the problem is, is for years, not even the fire department has had a line item to be able to repair the building. So when it fell apart, it was an emergency expenditure, the city commission had to approve. So this is not only to circumvent that issue in the future, it is also to get them a maintenance fund set up through their budget process to be able to take care of the building.
And so let me ask that question a little, a little better, so they're not dropping their funding because everybody else is cost sharing? They're still funding, and we're helping along those lines.
Yeah, in fact, they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars this year on their own just to repair this. And the, the maintenance money, what we're planning on for the future, is that we put this maintenance money into their account. Then when there's upgrades needed to the facility, or there's new things needed, or they want to build a new, uh, training prop or something like that, that they already have money to be able to do that, you know, through their, rather than have them go, okay, we wanna build this, let's everybody get together and fix it.
And all of that council views, we're already on there to utilize it, and we want to, can you print certain parts out of the account?
Yes, and, and we use it quite a bit, it is our primary training facility, so we use it a lot, it would be one of the, one of the higher end...
Where, where is it?
It is, uh, if you go out to the airport, um, or the Emerald College, or the old airbase, used to sit right on the south side. Uh, there's a six-story training tower there, with a truck bed. Yeah, that's where, there's some old school facilities. That's there.
Chief, do you use ad money for this purpose?
Yeah, I think the account looks healthy with your projections, that's what I'm envisioning, Carrie, in my mind, all your projections of the amount of money when it's coming in. It's a lot, lot more than you thought it was going to be.
Yeah, exactly, and I'm, that's what we need to, what we do, is use it for all of this stuff, to be able to take a little bit of the strength off of it. Regular operating budget, but at the same time, we have to make sure that we keep our operating budget intact, so...
Yeah, it's a balance, a little bit of a dance.
So you don't have any issue with it taking out the ad money?
No. All right. Anything else?
Um, just, uh, the other deal was, uh, the medical services, the increase in that basically due to us having to get a physician and, uh, infection control. I was gonna say, that one, we, we tried to, uh, basically get together all of the, the three big departments, water, ground, land, the city got together, and we came up with a basic plan that would all use the same, so, and even the Fickleville, it's going on. It looks like it's gonna be pretty good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Attention center. You're doing a, Sheriff, you're doing an upgrade here. Want help?
Well, we're moving one up to the same as the other.
And then you gotta make this check, which you gave up to corrections officer.
And the, the sheriff had one I T, but you took that out, wasn't it?
And groceries went up, like always? And your gun range? Was plasma up? You don't have plasma?
We're gonna need to, to replace it, I haven't been putting it on.
Yeah.
If, maybe you said this, Judge, just to make sure, 'cause on the press, I don't know, it's just a reminder, the mental health, um, the grants no longer pay, but we're picking up the salary.
Yeah, the grant went away, right?
No, it's still there, it's still August the thirty-first.
Okay.
Yeah, so did that work?
Excuse my words, Kirk. The grant was for a certain program, it was cops, the, um, they paid for our person to be involved in that. I don't believe that we're gonna get the statistics that they wanted, and they had five, four in the grant. They wanted it to get thirteen people. Um, we have two so far, that we've been, we've been starting to put, um, and I hear that grant comes about this. The, the requirements are, is they're looking for somebody with mental health... The, the requirements are, is they're looking for somebody with mental health issues and they're codependent on alcohol and drugs. That can get out of jail on probation. Those first two components don't fit into the third component that we, we study jail on probation with what we have in our. And so we're not fit, we're not fit. The grant, or the grant goes through from the end of August, I believe, and at that time we will need to reset it with my suggestion and one of the past. Our people is to not continue that project. And we will continue to do the program and we think we can make more of the impact on the people that it doesn't follow the grant criteria, if that makes sense.
So you're saying that it's not like the grants went away, we just are no longer eligible because we're not hitting the stats?
We, I believe that that's what's gonna happen.
How many people?
The sound is rich there.
I'm sorry?
How many? The sound is rich there.
I don't know, though, like I said, we're, we're telling Randy that, I, last I checked with the guys, they said, no, no, kind of, maybe they've got that for you.
So.
Again, it's, it's tough, it's a tough, and that third component is what's killing us. Because the whole idea is to get that person back out into society. And most of ours fall into the district attorney's court and not the Scott's court, so it's not like we can get them out on probation or get them out on, on, whatever.
How are some of your programs working? They're still working good?
Our, our programs are, are phenomenal, and, and they're the ones that I'm talking to. They think that this, they will still use this cops duty, but they won't be restricted to what, where, where are we with the grant? And they feel like that they can, that they, they can soar with that. Jim brought in a huge program with that, but we really had to water it down because of what TPC was wanting them to do versus what he wanted to do. And talking to the other ladies in relation to if we can continue with what he brought in, and some other programs and make a, a larger difference than what we would with, with this grant.
Have you guys ever been out there to watch a graduation?
I, I have, and I will send you all the email the next time we have a graduation. Where we have lots of.
For a left client next, yeah.
There's nothing like a grown, you know, fifty-year-old man crying, and that's besides himself. You know, I'm. But, but those guys.
I heard him crying, you were.
You know, it's really hard for me to explain what we're doing with those people because we don't understand. You were taught that and you were taught, um, how to control the danger, and these people never were, and we're trying to change that. And the, the, what we're, what we're doing, what you see is just, so I'll, I'll send you guys all the email the next time the, the graduation comes up. They don't know about one fifth of what we do. And most of them will go, um, and it's pretty emotional. You know, but it's also, you can tell that it's heartfelt, um, to sit there and tell, and sit there and have people tell you that they're glad that we're kind of doing it. Because we offer these programs to them, it's pretty phenomenal.
Because you first one is that you're.
And, and that's what it is, it's just.
They've never had.
Is that program under review?
Nope. These are ones that we kind of saw the handwriting on the wall that we needed to work on.
Well, yes, personally, the grant that you, that you've been using, is already transferred, maybe they rethink that and transfer to what you're, the council wants to do.
It all came through the legislature, and so we'll have to take some of it from you.
Well, they obviously, they always gotta realize that it's not working the way that, where they're gonna set it up.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll button down the rest of the comments, I'll be in a little. I'll take the jokes, kind of, a little.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're all, no. Well, but maybe it's fine, you can all probation, the service extension, all that, I don't think, I don't have it yet on that. I want to move, um, Michelle up to what Shannon is making, just make them even. Michelle is busy, 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 she has so many cremations and so many mental health, she's got people in her office all the time, and that's the part. So I just wanted to bring her up to match her with Shannon.
And that's a two thousand dollar.
She probably does paperwork for about sixty-seven a week. Okay, um. So what does that specialty services there belong about?
Mental health.
Is that, is that your, is that your, is that the NACE fifty-three oh five?
Yeah.
The score? The na, the, the name score just, there's nothing.
That can change, Denise's salary or anything.
I'm sorry.
Denise's, Denise, or salaries, yeah, everything's cool. Are you putting her in the new building? Are you putting her in the new building?
The, the, I have designed it for sure. Yes. But I'm gonna talk to Denise and then see if that's a good idea. Because they're gonna have paperwork that we necessarily shouldn't have access to until a certain thing happens. And so I don't know if we want. And I, I had one, they said I could get a separate storage stuff, oncoming stuff, but they're selling things that. Go get, get with us, folks, and then get back, text me.
Okay, okay. Good. Thank you for.
I will go over here. You know, women try to do anything about themselves.
I think we can.
If I go without women. We're just trying to find a man, I said, try.
No, there's no money, there's, there's no.
Okay. All right. Here's what I see happening October first. I'm already gonna be three lawyers short. I'm gonna lose three lawyers, the ones that I hired. And. Probably other folks that will leave. And to be honest, that decision's gonna break, break the, 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 the office. Well, that's, we will not be able to stand courts by the time it's over.
Okay, extension agent, no changes? Having the crime, it's all totally the same. Redbridge. Sebastian, what was it, did it last? Oh, man. Here, we're gonna change it around, make you look perfect. All right. So I see no changes in anything, other than what you, you've asked from equipment or in that section, is there anything you'd like to talk to us about?
No, basically just the equipment, it's okay. Like you said, I, it's just the equipment part of it, which, uh, I added a couple of extra things because you know, in the future I'm gonna need to also like, uh, the mowing decks and stuff like that, and, um, but I'm foreseeing probably a new dump truck next year. Because we have an international that can, uh, that just can't stay running very well. So that's possibly on next year's budget, it should be about a hundred thousand dollars. All the equipment we use is very expensive. Yeah, but it lasts forever, uh, that international, it can, it won't come here a bit. So we get our money where it's going.
The only thing I have on his budget, Judge, is, um, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand above the lights by the school.
Yeah.
And wondering if there should be an interlocal. Um, I've not driven out there personally, but I think most of that fits in Randall County. And so in my mind, there's an interlocal between like Bushland, ISD, Randall County, Potter County. Like, I just don't know that we should be fronting the whole two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I talked to Sebastian earlier today, I'm, I'm ready to say heck with it.
Yeah, I'm sure with that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, Randall County's gonna say no. Those ones going, no, it's not our problem, it is their problem.
Yeah, it's certainly their problem. When they come to the table, like an interlocal, they'll be entertaining.
Yeah, they're in tune in, they're not doing anything.
Yeah, the deeper I get into that, the more, uh, there's federal laws and traffic studies, but we've been trying to tell them to do a traffic study for years. I've been dealing with their traffic issues for over ten years, I know we've been meeting with them, but, uh, there's really no solution, there's only a way in and a way out, and that's the bottom line.
So, um, Judge, it's currently in the budget, we're taking it out, is that right?
Yep.
That's the only question I have.
All right. Okay, so where are we now? Can't go out like, equipment or whatever you call it? We're gonna get this done, oh, I'm sure. We can get this done next time.
Uh, no, I need to be somewhere, anybody? I mean, I saw the people are hungry, so.
I think we can get this done today. So what page, what page do you want us to?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're out of it. Sheriff, where are yours, Sebastian?
Atlanta, go first.
From what I can gather here, Sebastian, you are getting a cattail or, uh, loader, and that's through the CAD fund, correct? Okay?
Which is nice.
Yeah, that's very nice, yeah. And let's see. You are purchasing John Deere tractor from this year. This year's time?
Yes.
Okay, right, okay. And then the traffic signal is out. And then the sixty-three thousand for the ru, the room?
Yeah, street sweep room.
Uh-huh. And that is something you need to do now. Okay.
Yeah.
Let that in. It's all good to lower or whatever you have to do, let's get the room to go with it.
Yeah, well, that means that there's, uh, patching on your ground, so code in your ground. And we've even built a motor the other two, the cats, and, uh, the older ones I had, we use them every day.
Okay, so Ca, uh, Sheriff, with the two twenty-five back in? Is that good, what we see? Back in, I mean.
You can back out, back out. I was like, wait, what direction?
Back out, back out. I still, I'm, I'm working to reset your bill again, that was.
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna respond to this, that's it.
Are you good? Are you happy?
Appreciate it.
Give me a smile, give me a smile.
I'm very tired.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, um. Let's see. Fire rescue, you got all your stuff, you're all good. You're good. What are we, we're doing two trucks, turn out.
Fitness?
Yeah, I have to put this mess all up there. This is for the new, the Bushland station, okay?
The CAD list is basically our plan for the next year or so.
Okay.
And it is subject to change at any time.
Okay, and then the thirty, or twenty-seven tablet replacements, are those, is that what goes in the actual fleet?
That's in the apparatus, yes, they're coming to their end of life.
Okay. So you can really call it the chief tacklers.
We don't have to do that.
I'm sorry, I could not help myself, you.
We have a lady maker who talks to this.
Okay. You don't even get that, do you?
It turns forty.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Don't dance. Um, Sheriff. Let's see, what are we doing here? Everything's in, everything's in. Where's the laptop? Please, where's the laptop cages?
That's all the stuff that goes in your top.
That's the out, okay, that's all. Okay. Okay, I'll call that in. Attention, you're getting that, you got that big, uh, big mower, everything's good with that?
He loved it.
I think he does.
He told me that he went from an hour and a half to forty-seven minutes. Twenty-two seconds to manual load.
I've got pictures of it.
I don't want it, yeah. Okay, all, all is good there. Um, where is the CSD? Carrie, do you know what that is? Don't they always just put something in there?
They do, and we are responsible for their facilities and, and equipment, so that's just what they put in every year.
Okay, every year, okay. All right. Fifty-nine. Do you have H, where do you got?
I think, yeah.
Uh, the piece before that, I can show.
Maybe that's wrong. Uh, no, there was a HR. Yeah, that one. The HR department is all, which is at the top.
Yeah, that was the workstation.
Yeah, workstation, that's it.
Information technology, all of that. I didn't get a better quote on the panel.
Yes, I emailed that, Carrie, is that better price point in the budget?
It is.
Okay, so Brandon, that reflects our new quote that we got, perhaps if that's in there?
Yes.
Okay, Sandra's getting the scanner. Amy Archer's getting that, getting the laptop.
No, um, Brandon, I can stay here for that.
Okay.
Yes.
Call the doctors.
Yes.
And the key duplicator, you have that already, necklace?
I have not been, I was planning to get it, get it out of this year's.
This year?
Certainly we have. I don't have a new, any more.
Okay. Elections, you're doing those controllers.
Isn't that, isn't that kind of, okay, let's go, it's coming from this.
Yeah, we already bought that, yeah. Um, clerk, she's getting that, she is gonna do that thirty-five thousand.
Yes.
That's gonna benefit a lot of people.
Yeah, and, um, we did meet with that, that vendor and we negotiated better maintenance terms. So that saved us about two thousand dollars if I remember right, maintenance, so, thank you, Brandon, and all of us, we tried to meet before budget.
All right, District Clerk, we're not doing anything on that, are we? We didn't do anything on that, Sheriff?
No, they don't have a, uh, we'll get those, maybe correct me, but this would be a one-month, eight-year, nine-year.
Okay, okay.
And this is to move Odyssey to cloud? To the cloud? Okay, but we don't have a quote yet.
We don't have.
But that's still on your plan and trying to do it?
Yes. And then jury, uh, is that for the, the interactive software that we're giving them for the global device?
Yes, text messaging?
Yes. That's awesome, because that needed to happen several years ago, too.
Yeah.
And jurors go to a couple other companies that had been using it for a couple of years, and they said, or a few years. And then district returning laptops, we're not doing those, right?
No, they were purchased sixteen and officially good for rotation.
Now, we're doing that out, now we're talking. Now we're on page fifty-one. Information technology is Chevy, Equinox? Cut that. Help me out here, Carrie, we cut that, we, we didn't, we cut the vehicle last, they got them last year. And. You took that one of them?
The can?
Yeah. Okay? So you took out total four? And we have Charlie.
And this goes on the fleet management rotation, is that what this one is?
Yes. I think it's a silver rod.
Open the Volkswagen plug.
That would go better with your personality. I'm sorry, way ahead of you, left, Judge.
Crime attorney?
Crime attorney. All it goes in there, I guess I did.
Is it a slash, your research update?
Okay, then, District Attorney, same thing? Okay. Enforcement.
And we, we decided on seven, on this car, right, and the two we had.
Okay. And District Center, well. And Rose Ridge? Already did that. So.
So, what else are we? Um, I have a couple of questions, Judge, um, okay, so the CPS bay lift thing, we'll take that as a to-do in principle. Insurance formulas, what's in here is based on what we already, the numbers you had from this morning, that change?
Yes.
Okay, alright, and.
I don't think the center actually said that the county is going to.
From what to what, the, or?
Nine hundred and seventy-five to two thousand and fifteen, so twenty-dollar increase.
And then their increase was the, the highest was like twenty-eight dollars a month or something, okay. So we have our employee benefits, I mean, I think our, our package is so rich, that's such a nice thing to be able to do.
Uh, by the way, I put in a few percent cost of order increase per salary, I didn't know if I told you that.
You did say, oh, yeah. Thank you. Um, and then I have, so that's the insurance formulas, and that. You made all the fleet management changes, uh, we talked through some of that stuff already. Other than gas keeps trending very high, uh, so we probably need to do some homework on that. And then, um, Judge, were we gonna look at possibly a gas contract, do I remember that discussion?
We have one now, and I don't, we just checked with two people, and I think we've got to check with one more, Sam knows and see what's coming out, but I'm.
Okay, so it's just open for discussion now, okay.
Okay.
No, I just. And then the movie property, that project we took out, and we're looking at moving them to Sixth Street.
I have a, just a real quick question. The other departmental request for projects, did that remain in, or did those get taken out, but I just, just so I know.
The project list on your department?
We didn't discuss.
What page, what page was that on?
Yeah, I think it's in, it's in so much. There wasn't a lot of projects.
I think they were all in, yeah. Except the new building, that's the only one that I have. Okay, so is there anything else we need to discuss, want to go back to unit list and talk about that, or about the, the outsourcing thing, or?
I've got it in two weeks.
I have one more question for Carrie, if I can, I'm just going through all my old notes, insurance pricing, model. Um, the fiber interlocal agreement currently is in account seventy-five hundred, and we were thinking of earmarking it for a future line item in budget that could help offset IT?
It just goes into the general revenue, it can't go into an expense account, it has to go into a revenue account.
Okay.
And it's just in a general, or a recovery account.
Okay, so it wouldn't go into a revenue, okay, we would build a new line item for incoming revenue account for them.
It is in its own revenue.
It is own revenue, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and is that the seventy-five hundred?
No.
That's that interlocal fiber. And we haven't got, oh, my seventy-five hundred is the amount that I, not that one, it was seven thousand five hundred that we got on the first payment.
Here it is, um, on the screen, it's around everything.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, Carrie, what's the, what do we have to raise taxes to be all this done?
We are two points committed in shore, break even on three point seven shore revenue, but I'm taking expenditure.
And remind me the amount that you're comfortable with, Carrie, in terms of our underspend, and that's kind of a.
I have it at five percent, let me make sure. I guess it's a five percent under spend. Which leaves us this two point.
Okay.
And break even, we're probably looking right at four percent.
Could be about thirteen dollars a year for the average home. Two Starbucks and a gun. I have to ask, y'all like the way we're doing budget this year better?
Love it.
Good. I like it.
Okay, so, um, this tall now, it is just a break even, so we can see somewhere between three point eight and four point three, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, if you wanted to have your expenditures match expenditure, it's seven and a half.
So this is important because next year, we will have a three point five cap, that we know, so.
Yes.
It's important to know that, it will be very different.
Sorry, woman, please be careful with your budget spend, if or less, if you can, and take care of the equipment. No crashings of anything.
And, okay, I would like y'all to keep in mind, a lot of the reason that we're having a little bit more than, um, covering this this year, is because I bet we go from like two point seven to five point two. And we are using a million and a half government debt fund balance, but we can't do that every year, so that million and a half is going to come from somewhere in the future, so. We're going to continue for our taxes, doesn't continue to go, it's going to be out of.
And then I think what's hard is really the only way to recover that, because, you know, roughly sixty percent of our budget is salaries. And then you have to start looking inside departments, are we overstaffed, or like, those, those to me are the really hard discussions, because it's easier when you do it through attrition and people leave, and. But really be looking at your departments, because through attrition is the easier way, if you really don't need all that much staff. Cause it's gonna have to come from somewhere, and if not, it comes from equipment and things that you really need to run your department.
Okay, so what is next, Carrie?
We have on the twelfth scheduled, more time to discuss the budget, I guess we can other out any reason.
Okay.
We have our things still outstanding. And after that, we'll post for our budget hearings, which we plan to have the first one week of the twenty-sixth.
One of the women that we need, we try to do just for people from my. When do we add in these special, special accounts and stuff?
I just have a question on some of these things that we were able to get rid of. Can we reconsider maybe what the DA is asking us?
We'd have to do a tack, we'd have to increase.
I'm a little concerned about that department, so, I'd like, I'd like for us to discuss that. Maybe not, maybe, I don't know, I mean, twelve things, I don't know, I think we really need to revisit that. See what we can do, and we may not be able to, but we had some things we increased.
So here's what you gotta keep in mind, he's asking for a hundred fifty thousand this year, and then next year when we can't raise taxes, he's asking for another fifty.
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a balance, uh, maybe he can carry more of the burden than he's, than he's asking us.
Alright.
I think it was just something to keep.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, okay, so, uh, we did good, it's almost one o'clock, and we went through the whole thing, and don't want to add. Okay, so, uh, we are, oh, just. I have one action I need. There were two that we kept open, one is the policy manual about the sick. John, I'm surprised you didn't step up and say something, what I can't.
Well, I appreciate everybody and what's going through, that's tough for the, for the court, it's tough for employees too, I appreciate you considering it. The other idea that I, that I thought about was maybe, maybe do something to help maybe the church bring in free retirees and, and draw, I didn't. I dropped the patent, the cash payout, um, I, I think if the county could, maybe, maybe not this year, we'll open the discussions, or maybe next year. But if maybe, if you think we look at paying a portion of the employees' insurance that retire and get standing or something, just, you know, whatever that, whatever that number means.
They'll take, they'll take, use them.
I mean, you still save the sick leave, and if you have, if you got a year's worth of sick leave, then maybe the county may have, so maybe they will pay six months of your, of your, uh. Your sick leave, your, I mean, your, uh, your premium insurance.
You know, one of the things that, uh, that a lot of people that had sick leave when they get ready to leave, that they would use that sick leave at the end of their.
Yeah, maybe.
Prior leave, so, I mean, there's a lot of that that.
Well, that probably has, but I can promise you that, that started, well, it didn't start, but that was, it was totally individual to, that did try that, Sheriff's office, Sheriff for something. If you're sick, you're not sick, if you're not.
Sick, you're, you're Monday, you're Friday.
Yeah, you're Monday, you're Friday. Brown bottle for this one.
I mean, I think everybody is thinking about, like, that, take a Friday and a Monday off, I think that'd be great, but that's not fair to other employees who are dating when they're not coming to work. Cause they're using sick leave so often, we do that in good times.
Alright, so do you want to bring this back on the twelfth and discuss it again with some different options?
I, I don't know what those numbers would be, I won't even begin, but I think a good figure, a good figure that.
Yeah, I think if you.
May a nine forty per employee, the employees still pay their, their share of the county's gonna pick up.
Yeah, I would be a little cautious about the insurance, only because we know the expense continues to increase at a faster rate than people's salary increases, like, I don't know what that will be in five years from now.
But if you just did it for a year.
Right.
You can't, I don't, you can't, I don't think the court is committed to paying somebody now.
Yeah.
But if you just did it for, for a year, or whatever that, whatever that rule is, hey, you got three months till October, they're never gonna be out, so we're gonna wait for three years if you're leaving, I mean, three months if you're leaving. Just some kind of an idea that might help the employees when they leave, get them something.
Right.
Get a girl watch or something.
Got one of those.
We're not getting here.
Okay, thank you, Tom, thank you, I appreciate it, yeah, thank you. Right, you're our attorney, thank you, everybody.